Really close to here.
Yes. So we have a quorum of the school committee, so I will call to order this meeting of January 18th, 2022 at 6:04 PM. And first, I will read the agenda, which we will have communications and then our student representatives report, we'll have public comment, reports and discussion items, including the finance subcommittee update on the FY23 budget development, ARPA requests update, a Lynch MSBA project update, the draft of the 2022-23 school year calendar, and an update on the Winchester High School wind block and open campus. We will then move into action items, which include a report from the policy subcommittee on consideration of approval of the Manchester Field Basketball Courts improvements in memory of Bob Bigelow. And consideration of approval of a quorum signing for warrants, consideration of approval of the WIFEE grant for grading for equity and standards-based grading, consideration of approval to accept a $125 donation from Looters Environmental Incorporated. Yes, and then consideration of approval of minutes from November 1st, a special meeting, November 18th, December 7th, December 16th, a special meeting, and December 16th, followed by the chair report, superintendent report, future agenda items, and next meetings, and an executive session and adjournment. So we will now move straight into our communications. So this is our first meeting of 2022, and we've had a busy month ahead of us as the administration and the leadership team have been working diligently on the budget, an important submission to, on the Lynch project to the state, which was due this month, in fact, today, and supporting our students and our staff as best as we can during the challenges that we've had in the pandemic. So yesterday, we celebrated the Martin Luther King Day, Day of Service. This was coordinated by the Winchester High School Service Learning and also by the Network for Social Justice, and our high school students and staff ably adjusted to a remote version of this day. They had over 90 participants, opened with solo solos by Aisha Gosh and Sophie Wilson, and then there was an introduction of the MLK Day of Service essay winners, Arya Ramachandran and Ashna Maharia. Then there were breakout rooms with arts and crafts, the Latin Club Advocacy, the Network for Social Justice Room, and a collection of donations that went to La Club Boravita, which is in Chelsea, Chelsea. And I believe Dr. Hackett attended, so do you have?
Yeah, I was able to attend. I saw, I couldn't stay for the whole thing, but I did see the student performances, most importantly, and we just have some really talented kids all around, but they were exceptional. They did just a fantastic job. It was a good event. It was a really good event, special.
That's great. Yes, Mr. Brady.
I'll just add that we joined as well, and my five-year-old son Calder really enjoyed himself. He enjoyed the drawing activities and the story time, so many thanks to whoever was in the breakout room with the five-year-old.
Five-year-olds.
He was the only five-year-old in there, so thank you to everyone involved.
And thank you to our staff, Ms. Anne Marie Edenhoffer, who worked very hard in coordinating this. So we also have preschool lottery applications, which are going to be due on January, by January 28th for 20, the 2022-23 school year. If you are looking on our school website, you can look under the Winchester Integrated Preschool to find information on the applications. Let me see. January 25th, we actually have a special election in town. This is for a vote on the Northeast Metro Regional Vocational School to authorize borrowing for the design, construction, equipping, and furnishing of the new school. And our town meeting overwhelmingly supported this, and we just, it will, it is, the vocational school supports about 12 communities, and we need a majority vote to approve this, to go forward with a reimbursement as well from the MSBA. Dr. Nixon, did you have something?
Just dying to add something.
You may, you may do so.
Winchester very strongly supported the reconstruction of Winchester High School that was built in 1970. The current VoC was built in 1968. It's very much a similar building of that period, and just like our original Winchester High School is really dated, does not meet the needs of our current VoC students educationally. And the other, the other element of this that really is important for folks to understand is this project comes with an incredibly high reimbursement rate from the MSBA. It's over 80 or 85%. So the burden on individual communities is really light. Even though Winchester Town Meeting supported this initiative, there were a couple of communities that did not, and that's really what's triggered this mandatory election. So I hope people will come out strongly and show support for all of these students, some of which each year do come from Winchester and really appreciate this.
And if I didn't say it already, the hours are a little bit different. It is on January 25th, and it will be running from 11 to 6:00 PM, and the voting will take place at Town Hall.
All right. Sorry about that. That's much better.
Hey, Charlie, now, we're doing a couple of things before we get to you, but I wanted to bring you over, so I'll put you on mute, or I'll ask you to mute.
I do have a question for the chair before you move off of communications.
Can't mute or hear you guys.
That's, that's, that's okay. You're not going to be able to.
Happy to just get right into our presentation.
Oops.
All right, hold on. Oh, you know what?
Maybe you.
That's my fault. This is Dr. Hackett, just turned off my mute button, so promoted you to panelist. We're covering a couple other agenda items, and then I will ask you to come on, or the chair will, okay?
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. We'll look for you.
Let Dr. Hackett know that we can see them even though they can't see us.
Do I want to what?
I think I just did. Let them know they, we can see them even though they can't see us, because I think.
They probably did not hear that.
I think so.
I'll surprise them. I'll surprise them when I bring it back.
Okay.
Just had a question.
Oh, yes, you had a question.
Pre-K?
Yes.
I'm going to put someone on the spot here. Do we have a sense of when kindergarten enrollment is coming and a sense of, kindergarten screening is typically a little later, like maybe March, but I know there's some families who are beginning to ask about the kindergarten dates, and I don't think I had those handy. Do we know kind of what that is likely to look like?
We just found an email about it. I don't remember what the dates were.
We're trying to nail down the dates. I think.
It's typically the end of February.
Right.
End of February.
And I know the pre-K lottery happens beforehand, so I figured K was coming soon, but there would be presumed, like, in other words, how would families who are new to Winchester learn?
We will send out a notice, we will post.
There's a parent event as well. And then the individual schools will send out blasts, and you know, I'm sure there'll be a communication coming from there as well.
So maybe families could expect to hear something in the next two or three weeks?
I would say in the next week on the actual date. Yep.
Well, that's great. Thank you.
At our January 25th meeting, perhaps. We will look for that.
And the reason there's so many vacant stairs right now, to be honest, is we have a transition with our central registrar as well, so we're working through that as we navigate these timelines, but everyone will get the information ahead of time.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for inquiring on that one. January 25th, our Director of the Department of Public Health, Jen Murphy, and our high school nurse leader, Jen Markham, will be holding a webinar with the most up-to-date information on COVID. That will be at 5:00 PM, so please keep an eye out for that. And if you could also check your, to our community, if you could also check your newsletters for upcoming events in the community, such as from our WINPAC on IEP basics, this will be on January 26th at 7:00 PM. And then we also have through the, through the Network for Social Justice again, a School Committee 101, and that will be on January 20th at 7:00 PM as well. Dr. Hackett, I think you had a memo on the communications agenda about NIESK?
I did, and actually, and what I'd like to do is move it to reports and discussion items and have Mr. Mahoney, because he'll be here for, I also would just mention that we want to move Mr. Mahoney up in the reports and discussions, if we could, so we can have him talk about the NIESK communication.
That makes sense.
Okay. We can do that. I was, I was thinking of moving that to the area to be as close to him as possible. Okay. Okay.
I do have one more.
Yes.
A late arriving item that came in today from the Department of Education. They're nothing if not consistent. Announcing that they're allowing school systems to move to a different strategy with test and stay, and that we would need to notify them by the 21st, is whether or not we're interested. So what we're going to do is hold our place in line by notifying them on the 21st, and then come back to a discussion at your next meeting. We will have at least Jen Markham here, but we haven't had, I mean, it came out today, so we just have not had enough time to process it, and I think that we really need to be thoughtful in implementing anything different, if we're going to go down that path. So I just wanted to provide that to you for your information. I am prepared to ask zero, answer zero questions on it, and I appreciate your cooperation.
And I will add that to the January 25th meeting as well. Okay. And I guess before we move on to our student representatives report, I'll just comment that as we've done throughout this year to support our educators and students who come in every day to teach and to learn, we're continuing to meet in person. However, as we are facing off with the pandemic, we've asked only our administrative staff, who are on the schedule tonight to be in attendance, and also, many of our presenters will also just be reporting to us remotely. So without further ado, I will move to our student representatives, Elle O'Connor and Charlie Savage from the high school.
All right. Thank you guys so much for having us here. Glad we got over the little technical issues.
Hey, 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 ease up. I'm in charge of the technology, Charlie. And I'm really struggling. I'm really struggling.
I appreciate the effort more than anything.
Thank you. Standing. Thank you. I feel better about myself already.
Uh, we start us off?
Go ahead.
So just to kick us off, we just kind of want to give a recap on some of the last events that we had to end the holiday season. And one of the best parts about our return to school is that all clubs and programs are active. They are performing, meeting, and fundraising. The choral program had its winter choral celebration on December 17th. The Connect and Commit Club had their annual candy cane grams, and all proceeds went to a Boston nonprofit called Christmas in the City. The Italian Club made snowflakes to get ready for the holiday season, and many other clubs, including the Purple Club, Baking for Brightness, and the Technovation Club are also having routine meetings. New clubs are also up and running. Administration is currently working with Dr. Glenn Works to design WHS's first-ever esports with a generous grant from the PFA. And the Class of 2024's online store is up and running and can be found in the PFA Weekly Newsletter and in the morning announcements.
All right. To start off my session, I'd like to talk about the Martin Luther King Day of Service. It was held on Martin Luther King Day, which was Monday, the 17th, and although it was held on Zoom, it was extremely interactive and engaging. There were performances from the winners of the Day of Service essay held earlier in the year, as well as WHS soloists. We saw attendance of all different ages, and there is even a creative kids virtual room for youth, or anyone really, who wished to participate. In this specific room, people could learn about Martin Luther King Jr. and hear stories. All of this was done through the efforts of our amazing students and staff, as well as La Collaborativa, which sponsored the event. Moving forward, students have midterms this week. As you guys might know, the option to administer midterms or not was given to the teachers, so the amount of tests ones taking varies from student to student. And this is definitely a point of stress among many students, but from the ones I've talked to, it seems they like not having mandatory tests. We also want to congratulate some WHS students who auditioned and were accepted into the Mass Music Educators Northeast District Festival. Congratulations to Will Karen, Mark Marterosian, Maggie Bindadon, Jennifer Wu, Olivia Ma, Katie Jones, Gabriel Watson, Carter Knight, Elaine Ren, and Raquel Turk. As spring starting to come around, we get to see the return of many school events. WHS Royals is on for this year, and the candidates have been selected. The Saturday Night's Hoops is also back, which is the basketball program at WHS, which is open to all Winchester residents from grades nine to 12, and it will run from January 8th to February 12th. Finally, winter sports are now officially in full swing, and there's a ton of energy from the crowds.
And so being in a pandemic, it is great to see all these events and clubs returning. We know a lot of students and staff were nervous about returning to school the week following break, and we did notice that some kids were out of classes for many different reasons, plenty of them for being tested positive, but we also saw that the week that followed break was still somewhat normal. You know, we had our great snow day, and classes still took place. Everything was as normal as possible, given the situation. And we also have the results from the new survey that we conducted on the lessons learned during the pandemic. So would it be possible for me to share my screen?
Absolutely. Hold on just a second. You're going to be so impressed with this. Okay, you should be all set.
Um, I think.
Hold on. You know, I got kind of overconfident there.
You're almost there.
You should be there, no?
Yeah, if it makes you think back to the options appearing for me.
I think it's saying I might need to update my thing.
Okay.
Oh, update Zoom.
Would it be possible, Charlie, can I share this doc with you?
Yes, I can share it from mine.
Okay, perfect.
Students on the fly.
I was going to say, I'm so impressed with the technology problem solving.
I'm just relieved it wasn't me. That's all, okay? I'm being honest with you.
I'm still having technical difficulties with all this.
But you knew what to do about it.
Did. Brainstormed it, found a partner.
All right, perfect. So. Let me just wait for it to load a sec.
I need to find my glasses.
Um, can everyone see it? Is it all?
It's not loading up.
Not yet, but I do have a suggestion. If this still doesn't work, you can actually go into Google Docs and share it with F Hackett at winchesterps.org, and he can bring it up on his screen, right?
I can, I can do that.
That is true.
Just like you.
Okay, I'm just sharing it with Mr. Hackett.
Oh, my goodness. This is a lot of work, you guys.
I'm enjoying this and that stuff. I'm serious.
I'm just like, I'm impressed with all the, the layers of technology problem solving going on here.
Creative thinking here.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Charlie said the effort counts.
He did, and he's maxing my effort right now.
No, I can't. It was my fault. My, I have a million times.
No, 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 no. It's, no, it's on me. Okay, I got it. Hold on.
Nope, Charlie, stop sharing.
We are on our way.
Hold on.
There you go. It was almost there.
You're up. Hey, look at you go.
So in this survey, we received 173 responses. Students do get surveyed a lot with class surveys, health surveys, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and many more, so we are very happy with this number. We want to acknowledge that this does not allow us to make a generalization of the entire student body, however, it is definitely more accurate than our previous data collection. As seen by the first two graphs, a majority of students were hybrid, and there was a mix in participation from grades 10 through 12. Based on survey number three, students rated their school experience last year an average of a five and a half on a scale of one to 10. Students also showed in survey number four that they rated the way teachers and faculty handled online learning mostly between six and eight. Out of all the online programs students used last year, Kahoot still takes the lead as the most fun program. And then this was followed by Justing Gimkit, then Quizlet Live, and quizzes. And the online programs that were the most helpful to students' learning in survey number six were Kahoot, then Quizlet Live, which was followed by Gimkit and quizzes. Again, as we saw with the previous collection of data, we see this correlation between students enjoying these programs and actually learning, which is great. We also just want to highlight survey number seven. More than half of the students said that the return to school has been a seven or above, and I personally would have to agree with this and rate our return to school very highly. And then we also asked a couple of questions regarding students' stress levels. Based on our results, two-thirds of students say that their stress levels right now are currently an eight or above, and three-quarters of the students who answered the survey said that their stress levels are higher than previous school years. And then based on survey number 10, the main stressors in students' lives are tests and quizzes, busy schedules, homework, lack of sleep, and college prep. Those were the top five. But we also saw in survey 11 that half of the respondents rated the helpfulness of teachers and faculty advisors this year as a seven or above. And then the last piece of information that we collected was at the end of our survey, we asked students if they could describe their return to school in one word. What would it be? From personal experience, being back to school has truly been amazing. There is, however, something important to note about the data we collected from this question. A good amount of the responses were some variation of the word "stress." This survey was conducted during the last full week leading up to our winter break, which, due to the way how soon schedules work out, is usually just a more stressful time in general. So the situation that they were in at that time might not be reflective of the whole year so far, but it is still important to note nonetheless. Faculty and admin are also doing as much as they can to really minimize students' stress levels with things like the double wind block, among many others. With that, we also want to highlight some of the other responses. Many other students termed this year as refreshing, exciting, fun, awesome, relieving, and just overall better. Again, we just want to emphasize that this survey is not a reflection of every student at WHS, as our survey was only 10% of the student body, but each student has their own experience with attending this school, and we really think that this survey highlighted students' excitement to be back in school, and we hope it gave light to just a variety of topics in all. And so that concludes our report, so please feel free to ask any questions.
I'll leave this up for you guys to see.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Let me know if you can't hear the questions, because it's just being picked up on my computer, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Questions from the committee?
So can I, can I just say thank you? And I'm sorry, you're going to have to relay that. I want, I want to say thank you, because I know we've asked these two to bring back a little more data. I really appreciate this. I love how it's been presented. I'm glad to know this many students would take the time to take the survey, given how kind of challenging it is right now for everybody, particularly those stress levels that you mentioned, so I'm really very appreciative of that. It's an outstanding presentation. I love the thoughtfulness behind the questions. I love how you've organized the results. I love how you presented it, especially appreciative tonight of how you both sort of didn't let technology get in the way. That's part of life, is learning to be creative when you get obstacles, so you just did a fantastic job. I, I would really like to know if Mr. Mahoney? I, I would really like to know if Mr. Mahoney has seen these. I know he's with us tonight, so at least he's seeing them now. Any interest, Dr. Hackett, in, in, in funneling some of this stuff back to the teachers and administration at Winchester High School? I think it would be kind of a helpful communication loop.
Okay. Did you hear all that?
Yeah, came through perfectly.
Alright, Mr. Mahoney.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. I have seen these responses, and Ellen, Charlie, and I have discussed them. I'd be happy to put them out to the faculty, uh, either in a separate memo or my weekly Friday memo.
Other comments from the committee? Members?
Just thank you for, uh, just following up on Mr. Nixon and reiterating that we really appreciate you taking the time and, um, your enthusiasm for this project too, because it's a great window for us into how students are feeling and the actual student voice. I appreciate that you also, um, understand the limitations, that it is only ten percent of the student body, but this speaks loudly at least for that ten percent. So, um, I really appreciate the time and thoughtfulness and, um, the presentation that you've done here. Um, and I hope that we can use this as part of the other kinds of surveys that we do do with students and think about this in perspective of those.
Did you get all that?
Thank you.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
He's got those young ears.
Mr. Brady?
I'll also say thank you, and it's been a long time since I took STAT one oh one, but I think you got over the ten percent threshold. So I think your, your data is definitely reliable, and it's definitely gonna tell us some important things. So I commend you on getting, you know, well over that threshold and getting a good amount of students to participate. It's hard to get fifty percent of people to participate in a survey. That's extremely difficult. So I think what you did get is definitely to be commended. So nice work.
Thank you.
Mr. Hopcroft?
And I'll, I'll just echo everything that everyone else said. I, I think there's not much more I need to say, but, but it's very impressive. Thank you very much.
And I will also chime in and say thank you very much for your efforts. And also for, to all of the students who had participated on this survey for their feedback. It's very helpful. I also like the, how you included a little, an, an open response, so that students could also provide, um, as something more than, or some more, um, something more in-depth for us. And then also I just appreciate, again, just the ingenuity that you had with the technology tonight. Uh, but also reaching out, uh, and utilizing the wind block time period so that, um, you could reach as many students and classes as possible at the high school. So thank you very much.
Yeah, wind block has definitely been super helpful for everything like that.
That's great. Thank you. Um, alright, well, if there are no further questions, then as always, we welcome you to stay if you would like. Uh, but if you have more pressing things, homework, tests, and, and midterms, then we understand that as well.
Maybe something fun. Even if you have something fun to do, you should go do it.
Fun things.
They not sticking around for any student perspective on the wind block comments tonight?
Uh, we had not asked them to.
They would be welcome to if they could.
Would you like to make some comments on the wind block? We have that on the agenda for this evening. You kinda did already a little bit, but, uh, Mr. Mahoney's gonna talk a little bit about wind block and what we're looking, what he's looking at for major this year and next year. Do you have time to stick around?
So we will have public comment, and then we will have Mr. Mahoney speaking on wind block. If, if the committee, if we have consensus from the committee to move that up.
Yep.
Oh, well, we already have the consensus.
Is it, are the two of you?
So if you are interested, then we would welcome you to stay for that portion.
Picked you up a little bit there.
You.
Um, in the least room I possible, I really had to study.
We understand.
Why, you don't have wind block tomorrow?
Oh, I think that might be after.
You can always fill us in next time, too.
We'll get your feedback.
Elle?
Thank you all so much.
Alright, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, we will now move into public comment, and I'll just read off our preamble. Public comment shall be for a period of twenty minutes, and it is not a discussion, a debate, or dialogue between individuals and the committee. It is a citizen's opportunity to express their opinion on issues on the agenda or of school committee business. And any individual wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name, address, and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. All individuals shall speak to the full committee through the chair and shall not address individual members or administrators. And we offer in-person public comment. We ask you to sign in at our clipboard if you, with the requested information. And we also offer public comment with registration twenty-four hours in advance. Um, I do not believe we had any registrants for.
Not online, no.
Okay. Um, and do we have anybody for in-person public comment? Seeing as we have none, then we will move on to our next agenda item, which are the reports and discussion items. And, uh, we already have consensus to move up our update on the Winchester High School wind block and open campus. And we have our principal Mahoney here to talk about this.
Uh, good evening again, everybody. Oh, thank you very much for, um, the slide. So, I'm happy to take questions right off the bat if you have them. I know I did, I shared the, uh, pilot slides last week. Um, we've had wind block for a couple of years now, although we had a big gap in between, um, you know, the first offering of wind block, which was an individual, uh, offering over a seven-day cycle, to this new version, which is two periods, uh, during the six-day cycle. So, um, the pilot program this year is offering a double wind block, which is, works in tandem. One is, uh, certainly to give students more time, uh, more opportunity to direct what they need throughout the day, um, for themselves, but also to work with teachers for, uh, common planning time, which is something that, that was essential for, um, the high school through the NEAS process. Um, am I able to page down if I, if you share my screen?
Uh, yeah, you wanna share? Okay, hold on.
No, if, 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 are you okay if I say page down?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that for you, no question.
So for anybody that doesn't know what wind block is, it's an acronym, stands for what I need. We also like to call it, you know, Winning Winchester. We've got a couple names for it, but essentially it's known as wind block. And, um, historically, we've had, uh, it's, starts off as a directed study period where students are put with twenty to twenty-five students in a classroom. Um, this year, they're assigned two teachers, one for Wind Red, one for Wind Black. So it's on day, uh, two and five. And the focus of the time is for students is to figure out how do they, how do they spend their time? Do they need to, um, you know, make up tests? Do they need to make up work? Do they need to see a teacher for extra help? Can they take advantage of something that's, um, you know, one of our routine offerings that we do every single win? Or are they gonna see a guest speaker? Do they have a class meeting? Or they, do they need to see, um, you know, clubs and activities? So we're gonna tell all that in a second, but I'll, I'll go through the slide first. So, they're single grade groups only, and they're heterogeneously mixed. That's new this year. We tried to make them as diverse and inclusive, uh, periods for everybody. And these groups should stay together for three years. So who you have in your, um, grade nine wind block, you should stay together for the next three years if the pilot proceeds. What we did in our first version of wind block is that we were, actually had our students, um, in special education work directly with their liaison over this time. And that's something that we're struggling with, because we had then sort of created homogeneous mixtures where special ed students were with other special ed students and with their liaison. We wanted to mix kids, um, with, with other kids, so to get a, a better group and more diverse group of students together in the same classroom. What we're hearing mostly from kids in special education, as well as their liaisons though, is that they preferred that period uh, of the extra check-in with their direct liaison, and the teachers like that as well. So, still, Troy, we're still experimenting on what the best fit will be. We're not quite sure where we'll take it. Um, because, you know, the, educationally speaking, you want to create heterogeneous mixtures as much as possible. But if this helps our kids, uh, to have homogeneous mixtures with special ed students in the liaison, then we wanna help students, um, to the best of our ability as well. So we're, we're struggling with that a little bit. One of the themes that we found this year specifically is, um, when we try to fix some problems, we're creating other problems. We're, we're constantly creating new problems, uh, to fix old problems. And that's something, the same, same thing in wind block that we're seeing. So, uh, for the first semester this year, uh, Wind Red meets every day two, and Wind Black meets every day five. It's built into the rotation, and so all their periods remain the exact same length. We previously had it during the, uh, middle of the day. And that would actually shorten the length of a few periods throughout that day, and that was some of the feedback that we got. People, it felt like the day was actually longer, although they appreciated the time. It felt like the day was longer, because the periods weren't as consistent as they, as they normally would have been. So we tried to make a five, uh, a six-day cycle, but five-period day, um, as consistent as possible. We were able to achieve that with our double wind block, and offering it at the end of the day. Now, what we'd like to do as we continue to gather data and work on the pilot is actually offer it, uh, the wind blocks for the first two periods of the day. Um, what we're seeing at the end of the day is different for, you know, fifty percent of the kids. So we wanna try and gather as much data to see if the other fifty percent is, is even more productive, or everybody's more productive in the first offering, or offering at first period. So the schedule that we model ourselves off after, uh, there's a couple of different districts in the state that have a similar, if not exact same schedule. They have those periods, the wind block periods in the morning. Um, I think it's gonna be fifty percent kids like it, fifty percent kids don't like it, and vice versa for afternoons. Again, it's, uh, this theme of trading some problems to fix other problems. And we wanna use this year to tweak and, um, experiment a little bit. So for quarter four, we're going to look to switch wind block from the first, from the last period of the day to the first period. Uh, the times, or all the times will remain consistent throughout the day, and, uh, all the schedules for traveling staff have all been figured out. So it's not gonna impact staff, um, it'll impact students, but they might find the time more productive, um, or less, and we're gonna figure that out. So it's an opportunity to decide what they need, uh, with some guidance, of course, and support from the staff and faculty. And an opportunity to hold assemblies, assemblies without interrupting the day, uh, which we know our staff really appreciates. Could you page down, please? So we've also used this time to, for grade level specific information, um, almost like having a homeroom. If we need to pass out, uh, documents for signatures, or be different fundraisers, or just have a class meeting. Um, so we've also, this year, we're very proud of our new mentoring program. We've never had a W H S mentoring program for, for peer-to-peer. And we're able to start that this year for ninth graders, which clearly, um, our students need through the pandemic. That there's been a lot of, a lot of loss, a lot of lack of development. I mean, our kids are okay, but we wanna help them as much as we can. So putting in the wind block here mentoring program has really helped the, uh, ninth graders transition a little bit, uh, easier than they would have in the past. And we're able to have our up, our upperclassmen work with our ninth graders more directly on things like, um, studying skills and organizational strategies and, and planning and how-tos. So we're proud that wind blocks afforded us this time and ability to have our ninth graders transition a little bit easier and give our upperclassmen more leadership opportunities to work directly with their younger peers. Uh, teachers can request students for extra help, so that's the, that's a little bit of the struggle sometimes with what I need. You know, some of our teenagers will say, well, I, I need to do this. And we might have an adult from time to time correctly say, we know you wanna do that, but we think, uh, making up work or taking a test or using your time a little bit more efficiently is, is the best opportunity. So teachers can request students, um, to help them help themselves a little bit. And teachers can hold review sessions and sport sessions as they wish. They're not mandated to, but if they choose to, students can sign up or get a pass to go see a teacher for that extra help or, or pre-review session. Again, uh, some students, at the end of the day, love to have that period to kind of, um, relax, take a breath, get themselves, uh, ready for whatever activity they have in, at, at the end or after school. Um, other students might like the switch to the morning, because they're able to study for a test that day. So there's, a- again, we have to figure out what's gonna work best for Winchester High School. Do you wanna have no homework on a particular night, because you're able to do that homework? Or would you rather have a review with the teacher right before a test that next morning? Um, we'll, we'll see what works out. So we have a signup genius that we use, um, and some of the activities that kids are able to use. We have about fifty students that are able to sign up each, each wind block to exercise in the gym. So that's walking, shooting hoops, playing ping pong, um, just getting general exercise. Some of our, our, our physical education staff offers different training sessions. Um, and you'll see a lot of activity. It's kind of like a hive of physical activity, uh, in the gymnasium. Kids are also able to use the, the fitness center, so if they wanna run on the treadmills or get a lift in before their after-school activity, or before they go to work, they're able to use that time again to help themselves. We have guest speakers. We have, uh, extension activities for guest speakers, and I'll go over that in a little bit. Um, and we have things like non-electronic game groups. We have our, so, you know, if you're a, um, Settlers of Catan player, which is very popular right now, there's an opportunity to meet with friends and just play your classic D and D board games and things of that nature. They're non-electronic game. Wanna shut off from the screen a- as much as we can. Uh, we have Molly the therapy dog, and sorry, Rosie the therapy dog, um, who we like to say is the most popular girl in school. And I've lost this slide, but.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
That's okay. I have it printed out anyway.
Got it right here. There you go.
And we have a silent study room for students that wanna get some studying done, um, outside the classroom in complete silence. So students are able to study in their directed study classroom with the teacher in front of them, but other kids are able to relax. So they might be having some conversation. The student wants a completely silent study room, we have that available. That's new as well. Um, and then clubs and activities are able to meet. We know it, so many of our kids are in more than one club or activity, more than one extracurricular activity or sport. Some time during the day to meet and, and create club and activity, uh, models, fundraisers, things that, that they wanna do is, has been very, very valuable. And, uh, there's a lot more. I'll probably review that, just based on the slides. I'll review that more than once. So, there's always concern at the high school about time on learning. If you don't know what time on learning, DESI mandates that we have nine hundred and ninety hours, a hundred and eighty days of learning per school year. Um, we've been tweaking our schedule the last couple of years to bring us much closer to the nine ninety. Um, so they do count directed study as time on learning. Again, we reviewed that with the other school districts that have similar models, um, and also contacting DESI ourselves. With our six-day cycle, uh, with five periods a day, it's sixty-seven minutes. You're able to see the math. I don't have to repeat it to you. Uh, we actually reached a thousand and five hours with time on learning. Um, then we take our seven half-days for P D and, you know, pre-holiday, pre-FThanksgiving, those half-days, and we come to nine hundred and eighty-four hours, which obviously is not nine ninety, but it's, it's much closer than we've been, uh, in years and years. So, just some of the assemblies we've done this year, and normally I think this list would be twice as long, because with COVID and the pandemic, we have been, um, very careful about having guest speakers in in putting students in the auditorium, um, and just meeting in large groups. Uh, we have done it, but we wanna try and control it as much as possible. So I think, uh, if this was a normal year, if we ever get to see a normal year, that this list would be twice as long for opportunities for kids to meet in the auditorium for special presentations. So, um, almost every week, we have college representatives come and visit us during wind block. So your juniors and seniors, even your, your freshmen and sophomores who are interested can go visit, uh, what, uh, college, whoever's visiting from um, whatever area or even, uh, you know, national college. We have people fly in from all over the country that represent their school. The kids can, that are interested can sign up and go, uh, take a look at whatever college or university is coming to present to us. We have our class assemblies, so if you're a ninth grader, you know, we, we would have you down to the auditorium to talk about the beginning of the school year or to talk about what the expectations will be for the school year. If you're an upper, if you're a senior, we had a, um, a wind block for Q four expl- senior exploration. So those students didn't have to miss school time or, uh, after-school time, which is always difficult, because they're going in so many different directions. We have a, a talk regarding the quarter four senior exploration. We had our club fair. We had Chet Harding, who leads an improv group, and he came in, um, for leadership and skill building, and that was available for all grades. We're about to have our day of dialogue. So a heads up to ninth-grade parents, there'll be a form, an opt-out form, but also an explanation of what the day of dialogue is and why it's so important. That should be coming out tomorrow. We put the finishing touches on that today. Uh, we had Mikey Fallon, who was a motivational speaker for ninth graders, essentially to talk about, um, accepting who you are, being, being your true self and not wearing the public mask that so many of us do. Um, and that, he was a powerful speaker as well. So, these are the type of things that, that we've had so far this year. And in a month's time, uh, we'll be having our annual financial literacy fair, which we haven't had for, I believe, two years now. Um, so we're very excited to have that during our wind block as well. Again, this list would probably be. Again, this list would probably be twice as long and we'd probably be meeting with the classes a little bit more often. But we're trying to, you know, take care of the kids as best as we can and not meet in large groups. So just to regroup, just to go over a few of the activities that we've had. Again, extra help and meeting with teachers is in every, every single wind block opportunity. Kids really use that, especially now. Now more than ever when kids are up for five days or more, if they test positive or if they're post-contact. That extra help time has been invaluable. I think, and totally, I can tell you that that's probably the most commonly used activity. When kids get back to school, they're making up work, they're making up tests. We have talked about just making up the essential work and the essential assessments as well. And teachers are tweaking that, but that's, that's secondary. Meeting with your, your guidance counselor, doing your, your class meetings with your guidance counselors as well. We've had yoga in the past. We'd like to bring that back, but that's been on hold for right now. The club meetings, the class officer meetings, so student council can, can get together and plan presentations like you just saw with Charlie and Elle. We have, you know, additional voluntary music rehearsals because the kids, you know, weren't actually able to sing or play music for a year and a half as well as we normally would. So they're, they're getting a lot of extra rehearsal time. Gems is one of our, our groups that are, with some of our counselors and adjustment counselors run. And that's social, emotional and connecting with other kids. So that's a valuable tool as well. We do the real world design challenge. We've had coding. Our, our tech help desk kids can work in, in the library to offer tech support. CTC access, which is our creative technology center, is always difficult to get into if you have a packed schedule. If you're just a kid that likes to play around with technology or art and you need some time in your day, wind block has afforded you that time. We've got a lot of kids that go into the CTC to just create. Service learning meetings and then again, the fitness and the games and puzzles. Those are our typical every, every day two and day five offerings. So kids have a lot of choices and a lot of flexibility. Can you slide down again, please? So we did survey our students. It's, I'd say, pre, pre, around December, I believe. And we had 765 responses, which is an amazing response rate for us. As Charlie and Elle did say, it's getting more and more difficult to elicit survey responses because we do survey kids a lot. We survey what classes they want. We survey their social, emotional wellness. We're just constantly surveying them to get a response. And this does not include seniors. We didn't send this out to the seniors because not using wind block the same way this year. The seniors have pre, they have a, essentially an opportunity to take advantage of any of this, any of these opportunities that we offer, but they can also leave the building. And I'll get the, the reason for that in a second. But 765 responses for just grades nine through 11 is huge. And so we're happy with the data. Most kids work in some types of schoolwork. They meet with teachers for extra help. They make up assessments and make up assignments. Plenty of kids do socialize with friends because that's what they feel they need to just kind of decompress from a long day. We have students that work out, they meet with clubs. And then, you know, the mental break is also really, really important as well. So that's how our students say that they're using their wind block as of right now. So do students prefer the wind blocks two days or, or one day? You can see the overwhelming responses, two days. That's probably a no brainer. But they're, they're voicing their opinions that they like the two day cycle and the extra rotation, the, the six day rotation that they had not, they weren't, they didn't get two years ago when we had wind block. So a big component of the second wind block is, you know, besides to give the kids opportunities and just, and great ways for them to decrease their stress, which is always increasing, was to build common planning time into our, into our rotation for teachers. So the high school has ever, never actually had built-in common planning time. This was cited by N E A S C as something that was expected to have. And this is a way that we were able to do it. So this recommendation has now been satisfied. The rest of the districts, as far as I understand it, elementary teachers have one defined common planning time per week. Middle school teachers have a defined common planning time each block cycle. And this gives us the opportunity to have common planning time built into the high school schedule, which is very valuable, very valuable, excuse me, very valuable for our staff. The way we're doing this is that we're giving seniors who have spent quite a long time in school and sort of know at this point what they need, where they're going and how to make up work, how to get their assessments done. This is a block for them that they can still stay in school, they can still sign up for anything, or they can leave, or they can stay in the dining commons or auditorium and just get some quiet work done on their own. And we have plenty of seniors that actually stick around. A lot of them have sports and activities. Kids like to take a little extra break before those activities, maybe go home real quick and then come back if they have the ability to do so. Plenty of our seniors are staying and plenty of our seniors are going and leaving and they're going to work. They're able to get a jumpstart on their afternoon work or homework so that they can satisfy whatever activity they have outside of school. So with the common planning time, again, it, it satisfies one of the N E A S recommendations and what their expectation was. And if you page down, we'll go over what staff are using common planning time. So we have 59 responses and the curriculum alignment between courses and assessment alignment between classes is, has been huge. We haven't had that opportunity during the school day before. It's, it's work that a lot of high school staff has been doing on their own time, whether it's after school meeting in groups or before school meeting in groups or even weekends. However, they, they carved out the time, they had to do it in, into their own time. So this had given, has given them the opportunity to meet together. And we can tweak how it looks over the coming years if we stick with it. So right now, all of English would say have wind block red to do common planning time. And wind block black, they would have kids in front of them in the classroom. And say, science would have wind block black and English for common planning time. Well, English had the kids and then they flip-flop. So right now, you know, English and social studies would have the same wind block. Science and math would have the same wind block where they would have common planning time. And that affords us an opportunity for cross-curricular conversations as well. In the future, if we feel like we've, we've had, we've exhausted a lot of conversation and a lot of these opportunities, we can start to flip-flop and have different, different departments meet at, at different wind blocks. So there's some flexibility there as well. So a lot of work is on PBAs. I know Dr. Ellenine would be happy about that. We, those responses were great to see. I am happy as well that a, a lot of teachers are, are starting to incorporate more and more PBAs to their assessments. And they're using it to evaluate student work and rubrics and just discussing best practices as well. So a lot of the time is being well-spent during the school day, which they had not been afforded for. Does anybody have any questions? I kind of flew through that.
Dennis, while you're still fresh on it, can you just talk about the N E A S communication as it relates to the wind block and the common planning time?
Sure. So N E A S, in their review, their evaluation, they really liked the wind block. They thought it was valuable for students to have some flexibility in their day and be able to book how they want to use their day, again, with some guidance and support from the adults in the building. But the common planning time was something that they said is, is something we were expected to have. And so the follow-up saying that wind block and using the double wind block and flipping between red and black and having common planning time satisfied what N E A S had recommended.
Thank you.
Are there questions from the committee members?
I feel like I haven't presented on Zoom in a long time, so if I'm tripping over my words, I apologize. It's been a while.
I have a very simple question. It's just, just procedural. So, so when students sign up for some of the different activities, is there a rotating schedule so that if you can't get into one particular activity one day, say the fitness room, you could, you could get into it at another time?
No, that's a good question, Ms. Bolinies. It's, it is first come, first served and you have to, you have to be ready to go when the opportunity presents itself. So more often than not, we're not getting the same kids and the same activities. And really, I guess the, the fitness center and the gym would be the ones that sell out. We would say, you know, we have, we have, they're sold out spots. And so you have to be, you have to be pretty quick with those. Sometimes a, a P E teacher who runs the wind block up in the, in the fitness center and the gymnasium will probably write you a pass to get you in if you happen. But you'd have to advocate for yourself. We don't have a, a rotating way to do it at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Other, Ms. Bergstrom has a question. We'll just pass the computer.
Oh, okay. I'll pass Dennis around. Now I feel like I'm looking right at you. So thank you very much for sharing this. It seems like there's a lot of benefits that the kids and the, the staff are noting in terms of their own learning and in terms of collaboration. You had mentioned the issue with the special education students and how they would like to be able to meet with their liaison again. Are there any other things that you are hearing this year that you would like to improve or change for the wind blocks to work effectively next year if we were to continue this pilot? What are some of the kinks you're still working out?
So, it's a good question. We do have kids that are, are not as productive as we want them to be. Although they were, they would argue that this is the time that they need. So if we have kids that are walking around, that are going for a walk in the hallways, it can be distracting. But as long, but they're also saying like, look, I need to stretch my legs. I need to take a breath. This is what I need. It's difficult to say no. So our pass system, there are much more, there are better technological pass systems that we could use. They, they come at a cost that they, you know, they come at, we'd have to spend money to use those. So to allow kids out in the hallways at different times rather than longer periods, that's something that we'd like to investigate. And just, we're always looking to see how productive kids are. And we know vast majority of Winchester High School kids are, have the time. We're always sort of looking at the 10% of kids that maybe we need to be more focused on or they could be more productive. But at the same time, if this is helping them get through the day, it's, it is a struggle to tell them no. So that's the, our pass system, productivity for certain kids. And then, you know, how can we tweak it to make it better for everybody? It's, it's, it's always in our forefront of our mind of how do we make this? What guest speakers can we have in? What presentations? What are, what are offerings we could offer on a weekly basis that kids would really like to have? We've surveyed them in the past. We haven't surveyed them specifically on specific offerings this year. You know, yoga, yoga, when I, when I first started this, I thought yoga would be the most popular thing in the world. Why would you not want to do breathing and stretching in the middle of the day? It's, you know, and be relaxed if we're so stressed. Or instead of going home and changing and then paying for it at a local studio. And yoga just didn't take off like you'd, you'd expect it to. So we're always open to trying things. And sometimes the adult expectation is not what the kid expectation is. So Dennis already thought yoga would be super popular and it wasn't. It's not, that doesn't mean we can't bring it back. Because again, I'm fascinated that it's not popular, but we're, we'd like to constantly tweak and, and figure out what we can do better. So the walking around at the end of the day can be a distraction and that's the number one thing I'd like to tamp down a little bit, but that's not to say we want to stop walking around. We want the kids to take a breath and, and relax at the same time. So it's, might be tweaking 1%, 2% here and there. The pass system can be, can be a little, you know, we have purple passes if you need to get a, if you need to get a pass from a teacher. We have the signup genius. We have library passes and, you know, there's a bunch of different systems we're using and they're satisfying everything, but they're probably not as efficient as they could.
Thank you for that. And I also noticed, Mr. Mahoney, that your, one of your goals was to have the students stay with the same wind block teachers for all three years. And I thought that was an interesting idea. Are you looking to move that towards more of a mentoring model than two, if you're able to do that? So students have that connection to a known adult?
So that's another, that's another great question. It's another one of those problems that we, we fix one problem and we, we create new problems. The first, the first pass at wind block, we hand-schedule kids with the teacher that they already had. So if you had, you know, Ms. Bergstrom as your science teacher, there was an opportunity that you were going to be placed in Ms. Bergstrom's class for that, that year. And it's a great opportunity for Ms. Bergstrom to say like, hey, you know, you owe me five homeworks. Why don't you stick around instead of going to the fitness center today? This year, we decided we wanted to try and do, again, this more kind of genius mixture. And so that doesn't mean you're going to have a teacher that you already have that year. And it acts as a pseudo-advisory. And by pseudo-advisory, there was a classic advisory model, which would try to go at Winchester High School that predates me. And it just didn't fly. And that's, that's okay. Not everything's going to work in every school. We make, we make things our own. So now you're with a teacher for three years and you should be given a little relationship as another trusted adult in the building. But that's, those relationships take time. And if you're a kid that's always, you know, every wind block, I'm going to go work on my clever activity or I want to go in the silent study room. The chances of coming up that room. So we're constantly debating back and forth. Do you want to go back to the model of having a teacher that you have that year so you can have that even more solid connection? Or you want to sort of be in the same room for three years? We don't have a decision yet on that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Did you, I'm going to pass you down to Mr. Brady.
Hey, sorry you're coming down the line here. Thank you so much for this. I, I really appreciate, you know, you and your team's efforts to innovate and to make sure that we're providing students with more flexibility. It definitely, I think, gives them a better sense of what life's going to be like beyond high school. High school's kind of weird, going to class all day, the way it's structured, that's very unique to high school. So I think it's definitely helping prepare them to give them that flexibility. So thank you for all that. I did just have to wonder, on the 990 hours, do we have a plan to get there next year in terms of the schedule? I would just hope that that's something that we can definitely make sure we're meeting that requirement. I know it's tricky with all the timing and, and I've, I've had to do the calculations myself, so I certainly get it. But I just wouldn't want us to feel like we were going to continue to go forward and say that we can't get to the 990.
We, well, we don't have a plan at this time. I would volunteer to the most unpopular decision would be to make the pre-Thanksgiving a full day and the pre-holiday break a full day and just wash our hands of it. But that would be a villainous move, I'm sure.
Yes. All right. Well, that's good to know.
And sometimes we, sometimes we have to make tough decisions that way. I know all my friends that are educators and, you know, we had the debate pre-holiday or what, you know, do you have a half day? Do you have a full day? All us half-dayers laugh at all the full days, so.
Yep.
It's a, it's a, it's a challenge, I'm sure.
Yep.
We do not have a plan for those six hours because six hours are, is really hard to carve out. One of the ways we were able to carve out more hours this year was with the, this week and the last week of school, those are full days of school rather than half-days.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a way we were able to push forward, but you can only push against, push against the fence so much, I guess.
Yep. No, absolutely. Well, I appreciate all your candor with that and we'll make sure we're helping you and supporting you to get there as well.
Thank you. It's not, and thank you for the, you know, the call out for innovation. It's not lost on me, Mr. Brady, that it's a very unique schedule. All high schools are, we're expected to be an expert in five subject, subject matters a day. Where college is sort of focused on one or two things and it's a slower pace. You're supposed to be more mature and handle more work. And it's a very unique, odd, public, public pressure, I would say.
Hi, Mr. Mahoney. It's Chris Nixon. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you just fine.
Welcome to the table. I have, I have several questions for you. On the special ed piece, as I, as you may be aware, as we rolled out co-teaching at more and in more and more classes and more and more grade levels a few years ago and, and saw some real success there, it kind of called into question what our understanding and definition of the learning center would be at the high school. And we had some conversation about that at the school committee tables. And I, I wonder if you could take a moment to talk about that, that interest that you described earlier among kids on I E Ps who are looking to have that structured time with their liaison. What do the learning centers look like at the high school today? How does this concept of wind block and this particular request bear on either what learning center looks like today or what it should become? And I asked that question with the understanding that in many students' I E Ps, that's structured time. So, so it is a requirement that they have that time in learning center because it says so on a document. But the intention in creating that once upon a time was to afford some kind of interaction, right, with special ed team? So if there's a way to make that happen through some other vehicle, then maybe it even further calls into question, what is the learning center today? What does it want to be in the future? This is something I've, I think we've struggled with before at the table. And I know you've joined us for some of those conversations and I'm sorry, Ms. Gerard can't be here for it. Can you try to tackle that for a moment for me?
Well, it's a lot of things to tackle, to be honest with you. So I think learning center currently, now we have multiple models of learning center at the high school. So I'm going to speak to just the specific L C two model, which is your classic learning center. And we have four or five other learning centers in the building happening all day long as well. But your classic learning center, as people would understand it, is an opportunity to check in with check in with a special education specialist, a person that can help you work on the skills that you are looking to, that are in your IEP that you need to work on in order to close each year. Oftentimes, that is spent doing some homework, doing some study skills, or doing activities that will help you move in that direction. I've never worked at a, at a high school or public school where the learning center is exactly the model we envisioned it to be, because a lot of kids need a lot of help. It's in, you know, 67 minutes, and that might not be enough time. They're oftentimes in Winchester High School, not checking in with their specific liaison. Now, teachers have access to work with them or a particular student on their IEP goals, but they're not seeing their particular liaison. You can just do the schedule model with co-teaching or however the schedule is created, so that, because teachers might not be, say, the LC class. If I was in the LC B block, my teacher's a co-teacher, and they're teaching, you know, co-teaching bio during B block, we're not going to meet up at that time.
Right.
And so, that hinders that particular model. Win block does give an opportunity, if you wanted to go back to do that way, of meeting specifically once, once a week, even with double win block, as a check-in model, not so much academically, but probably socially emotionally, and making sure that the goals are on target, a little bit more specific for each thing. But that's, that's, again, is a debate whether that's, that's the right thing or kind of the right thing. I think you can't go wrong with either, either decision, but it's a, it's a good debate we're having.
And so, given, I mean, I'm always interested and concerned about kids who are on IEPs because that, you know, we, there's some extra, we have a pledge of some extra support there. So, it, given, and I appreciate what you said earlier, you know, you try to solve one problem, you create others. Given the interest that some of our sped students have expressed, that you articulated earlier tonight, does, I don't want to read too much into this, but is it not maybe more likely then, let's say your academic liaison is not available during your LC2 time for the very reason you said they're, they're co-teaching a bio class or a chem class or something? Is there not a better opportunity then to meet with your specific liaison during one of those win block periods, and could that not be a priority in terms of scheduling? I mean, I know, for instance, you're saying you want to make these groups heterogeneous. I understand why, but it seems to me for some of our kids, that we were offering some extra special attention, maybe that should be a priority just in terms of scheduling. Do you follow what I'm saying?
I do. So, the student can go see their liaison during the current model of win block, or the liaison can say, "Hey, you know, Chris, I need to see you. Let's, let's talk about what's going on in your math class. You know, I'm going to be in this block in this classroom. I want you to come this and be here as a pass." So, that opportunity still exists. It's just a little bit more challenging. And if you have a kid with executive functioning disability, it's even more challenging because they need, they need a little bit more direction sometimes and a little bit more support in that capacity, just scheduling where they're supposed to be and what they're supposed to be doing.
Right.
That's part of the rule of probably their IEP. So, both models can work, but one nails it down and the other requires a little bit more effort and scheduling. Does that help?
Yeah, it does. I'm curious to know how do, given that the group sizes of the blocks, 20 to 25, I don't know what the average class size at Winchester High School is today, what is your expectation as principal about the number of teachers that are actually being assigned to win black or win red? I'm assuming it's not literally every teacher. So, how does that happen? Are there, are there teachers who?
It's every teacher.
Really? It's literally every teacher?
It's every academic specialist. Every teacher is assigned a win red or a win black. Every classroom is booked, and that's, that's how we're able to schedule it. That's also why we can't schedule the seniors. We literally don't have the room for them or staff to cover them.
Okay. Okay. And then, on your time on learning slide, which I really appreciated, says win block is a form of directed study, which counts as time on learning according to DESI. So, DESI, you know, what DESI says is directed study counts as time on learning. Do we have, but DESI doesn't, you know, contemplate something exactly like win block per se. So, can you talk more about, I was going to ask you about other districts, and you mentioned that in your remarks. How many other districts in Massachusetts are doing something like this? And I'm glad to know that you're, you're talking to them, or other high schools, I should say. And where does our confidence come from? I mean, you're absolutely right, directed study counts as time on learning, but there are many different examples of directed study. Where does our confidence come from, given how broad an umbrella win block is? Where does our confidence come from that that, you know, would pass muster with DESI?
So, I can't give you an exact quote anymore, Mr. Nixon, because it's been a couple, it's been five years since we instituted a win block, but we didn't call DESI and run it by a person who lives in town or works with DESI to say, "Would this qualify? Would this pass muster if we went in this direction?" How many schools? I'd say more and more every year. I can tell you that the town that I live in, which is Bedford, they have this well. I believe it's Liam or Natick. I'm always getting them to confuse.
Yeah.
The other have, has the same model. But I can tell you that more and more schools have, are instituting a win block style model, because I'm also getting emails maybe two or three times a year saying, "Hey, we really like your schedule. Can we answer, can you answer some questions about it?"
Yeah. Okay. And am I?
It's all anecdotal at this point, though. I can't, I can't pinpoint anything specific.
Yeah, no, I know. I mean, it's been a while, but, but am I wrong in thinking that DESI's coordinated program review, which is, what is that, a five-year cycle? Four-year cycle? Something like, three? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was longer.
Have a good time with our audits.
So, wouldn't, would DESI's court, some of their periodic evaluations, like coordinated program review, would it not sort of pick up on win block and acknowledge win block? In other, I guess I'm just asking, because I'm thinking of our state agency and their sort of awareness of this, an opportunity to, if you will, pass judgment on it, give it a blessing, et cetera. Would that not get picked up in some sort of coordinated program review? I'm looking at Dr. Ellen Emma as much as I am you.
I was going to say, I think there's some folks in the room that might be able to answer that more intelligently than I could.
So, I'm just thinking, we've been under all of our audits in less than the last year, so none of them asked for time on learning. I think, and Frank, you probably know this better, is there something that needs to be signed once a year about all this kind of stuff? Or it comes in the superintendent's checklist, right? Not so much.
It comes in the checklist, but it's not a signature.
Okay. So, it's not.
And I only raise it because superintendents and school committees have a responsibility in Massachusetts to sort of establish structured learning time goals. And so, what's, what's great is this has been seen to be successful, which is why we're going with the double. But when we go with a double, I'm just sort of doing a little bit of a gut check, just to be sure, you know, we understand from a regulatory point of view, this is doing everything that it's supposed to be doing, particularly given kind of how broad the goals are, if that makes sense.
It makes total sense and understood. It was, it was a concern that Dennis and I talked about. We talked about it internally. We think the benefits outweighs that, and we think that the logic is totally there. If DESI wants to make an argument against social emotional learning and kids' mental well-being, for what, Dennis, four hours we're talking about? We, how many hours are we off by?
Four, six.
Four hours.
Yeah.
It could be six.
Six?
Six.
You know, I, we would take the gamble on that. I think that, and as Dennis mentioned, there may be opportunities to find that time as we think about calendar, for example.
Yeah. Well, and just to follow my last comment, it's just to Mr. Brady's question, there's another way to increase time on learning, which is simply to go back and look at the professional day. I mean, it's a contract discussion. I mean, you can get more time because you say it's essential and you pay for it. And, you know, that could even be part of an FY23 budget discussion. So, we, we kind of scratched that surface back, and we talked about things like changing the school calendar and a couple of times before then as well. So, there's different ways we can, you know, build up those hours if we feel like we've sort of squeezed the turn up hard enough. I'm done. Did you want to say anything?
Sure. I'll be quick.
Mr. Mahoney has a hard stop at 7:30.
What time is it now?
It's, you've got.
Thank you.
So, I have 11 minutes. I will finish up in two.
We.
Or less, or less. I really just wanted to, you know, thank you for coming tonight and sharing all this and pick up on Mr. Brady's, you know, comment about innovation. And, you know, when we look at industry, you know, there's a trend towards companies giving people free time, and that's when many of the new innovations and products and things are created. And so, you know, not only for the social emotional, but, you know, the innovation that occurs when you give people space to pursue their interests is great. And so, I really applaud this, you know, this innovation within the school. I also wanted to pick up on the comment about the heterogeneous, you know, environment and building that intentionally. And I think that's also really important, because we see, again, more innovation occurring when you bring people together who have, you know, different experiences and outlooks and views. And I appreciate that, that you're balancing that with the fact that for some people, you know, change is hard and, and, you know, particularly if you have anxiety or otherwise, you know, mixing you up and being with non-familiar people, you know, can be really difficult. And I know that's a challenge that you're very aware of and working on, so figuring out what the right balance is between, you know, the value of having a heterogeneous environment and the value of having the, you know, the psychological safety, I guess, of, of the consistency. So, not really questions, but more, although happy if you want to comment on any of it, but just wanted to reflect that, you know, I think this is a really great example of innovation in our schools.
Thank you. You know, it's something that I've struggled with quite a bit, this heterogeneous, homogenous makes you full win block specifically, because is it really a homogenous, a heterogeneous mixture? If you have 20 kids in your win block and 10 of them get passes to go to the gym or to go to the extracurricular or go to see a performance, and you have 10 kids left, you know, and five, or five other kids that are in special ed go to, go get a pass to go see their liaisons, what are we really left with? It's one of those things I'm struggling with. Either set it up so that kids are already with their liaisons and then get a pass to go see, to go to a different heterogenous mixture or not. It's, the theme this year has been trading, fixing some problems and creating new ones.
Yeah. And maybe the optionality of keeping, you know, a teacher that you know or other students that you know, maybe that provides enough homogenousness within a heterogeneous, you know, system. But anyway, thank you.
No, my pleasure.
Good stuff.
So, thank you very much, Mr. Mahoney. We really appreciate your time with us this evening. And if anybody else has any questions or if you have any final comments, then we would take those right now, although then we'd have to pass you around again.
Was there any particular statement from Mr. Mahoney or from you, Dr. Hackett, on the Niasse curriculum or curriculum mapping observation in the letter?
I appreciate it. So, obviously, our teachers have been, each summer now, reinventing what we're doing as the past couple of years have happened. So, there were a couple of outlier subjects that hadn't completed those templates. The core content areas had done it, and a lot of our elective areas had also done it, but there were a few that had not finished yet. So, those would be a focus area that we make sure are completed and published. So, that's what we were missing.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mahoney, we're going to let you go.
All right. Thank you for having me. Thank you for allowing me to knock the rust off on Zoom. It's been a little minute, but we'll see you back here for Course of Studies and other things soon, I think.
You will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay. And with that, we will circle back to finance subcommittee update on the FY23 budget development. And our finance subcommittee has been very busy over November, December, well, actually over December when they were formed. They met over the break with Dr. Hackett and Mr. Rowe and will be bringing to us their budget proposals this evening. And I guess also I'll just comment here that you should have in your packet a memo from the finance subcommittee to the policy subcommittee recommending a review or creation of policy around unused class funds that remain in an account after a class graduates. So, we might touch on that as well later. Dr. Hackett and Mr. Rowe and Ms. Bergstrom and Mr. Brady.
Thank you. You want to start?
Sure. So, finance subcommittee's been meeting weekly on Wednesday afternoons. We have been looking primarily initially at the rollover budget. So, the, this would be the budget that takes us everything that we are doing this year and moves it forward. We've been able to put some numbers now to the contractual salaries and transportation. And Seamus, feel free to jump in wherever you want to here. So, the estimated cost to move us forward on contractual salaries is the 2.24614, and the additional transportation costs are about $23,400. Our FY22 budget, you see the current year is at 58,153,993. With that additional increase of 2.248014, it would take us to a FY23 rollover budget of just over $60 million or a 3.87 increase. And this is just to maintain the services and the staffing that we have now. That contractual salaries takes into account part of an increase if we look at increasing our teachers' salaries in the new teachers' contract that we'll be negotiating and the increases in transportation costs. So, this is the required program needs. So, this is the maintenance of effort that we need to do, and this is the mandated services that we need to provide. So, system-wide, the out-of-district tuition, the estimate, the estimate on that after Ms. Rowe and Ms. Gerard and Dr. Hackett have done some investigation of what students are anticipated to be going out of district in the future, and to maintain the students we have is about $700,000.
Oops.
Whoops. That's okay.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Yeah.
Is this an additional, a change from one year to the next, continuing?
This, this is the, the addition to the rollover budget.
Okay. Thank you.
The professional services estimate is at $100,000 for next year. That's to provide, as Ms. Gerard described it, much of the contractual services, the additional services that we need to provide to meet special ed needs, the IEP, the three-year reevaluate, the additional evaluation services that we're expecting in next year's budget. The LBLD program at the elementary school is seeing at least 30 students in the program next year, and that is going to require an additional sub-separate grade four, grade five class for those students moving up and as we're seeing additional second graders coming in. So, it's going to require an additional 1.0 FTE to meet the teacher and teacher-to-student ratio guidelines as required by students' IEPs. Also, for a similar reason, the LBLD program at McCall is also seeing an enrollment-related increase. They currently have an existing position that's a 0.6 FTE, and they're going to want to roll that forward by 0.4 FTE to be a full LBLD program at the McCall Middle School next year. Additionally, there are four known preschool students that will be moving up to kindergarten that as part of their IEPs require ESP support, and they will need to move those ESPs with them to kindergarten. However, the preschool also anticipates still requiring ESPs at the preschool level. So, that would be an additional four for them to move forward to kindergarten. So, we're seeing an addition of $1,47,210 for our required program needs.
So, before I rolled it over to Ms. Bergstrom, I should have set it, set it up a little bit in terms of this frameworks, because I know every school system has different terminology for their budgets and what one budget means versus what another budget means. This is what I brought to the finance subcommittee. I've had conversations with other members today as well, and just, we will nail down, I think, because we want to be consistent historically, because as we know, this document in this budget goes to other people who, who are certainly used to a certain vernacular that we want to make sure that we try to maintain some consistency with. But having said that, I just want to, rollover budget is just taking everything we have currently in front of us, making no adjustments for any potential retirements, or it is just rolling over contractually mainly on employment contracts. We also, as you saw in that slide, we have transportation, that's, that is a built-in increase on our transportation contract. contract. So that is what we're calling rollover budget. Maintenance of effort is essentially what we have to have to open the building. I want to be clear, these are the items we have to have to open the building. These are still works in progress. They're, they are estimates in some cases, for example, those first two items, the $700,000 and the $100,000, we are, we are continuing, Peter's doing a great job working with Pam Gerard, on continuing to hone down that number. At some point, this committee needs to make a decision because the first number essentially is trying to make up what we think will be a structural gap in our special education tuition, because it's not all budgeted in the operating budget. We also have several other sources that we pay tuition from, which Peter, if you could just speak to in a second, but we do have a structural gap based on the number of out-of-district placements that have happened over the last year. And we need to figure out how much of that we want to bring back into or bring into the operating budget so we don't have that one-time huge cliff that we're facing. $700,000 is on the high end, so this is kind of the worst-case scenario. I think as we work through this process, we may see that number drop a little bit. So that $1,47,210 is the additional amount of money needed to open the building. Again, none of these numbers have included retirements yet. We haven't gone through certain lines. We haven't made any real staffing adjustments in terms of where people might be, enrollment-related adjustments other than our special education. So there's, there's more, obviously, work to do in a short period of time. So I just wanted to, I apologize for interrupting, and I apologize for not setting that up a little bit.
Can I interrupt the interruption, though, to just clarify something you said?
Yep.
The contractual salaries number. So FY23 will be under a new CBA.
Yep.
There will be some COLA in that CBA.
Yep.
So help me understand, the 2.2 assumes no COLA. This is just steps and columns?
No.
Or this is some average COLA assumption? So this gets a little tricky in how we're talking about this. I want to understand what's in this number.
It assumes, it assumes steps, columns, right? And it also assumes a, 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 a average COLA.
It assumes something.
Some kind of COLA, right, right.
Okay.
Right.
So actually, can you go back to the previous slide, Dr. Hackett? Because I'd also like to talk about the $700,000, because we have also talked about whether ESAR funds could, could help us out in covering this. And I want to go back to something Dr. Hackett had said, is that the concern is that we could use some of our ESAR funds to help us fill this gap, but that that would not help us with the structural, the structural gap that we would then be creating. So Mr. Gerard talked extensively about how once students are in out-of-district placements, they will often stay in out-of-district placements for several years. So if we were to use ESAR funding to close that gap this year, then next year we would have the same structural gap that would then appear. So I just wanted to talk about that since that had come up in our meeting as well. Thank you. So, and then we, we began to talk about what some of the district priorities might be in addition to the rollover budget and the mandated costs. So one of the, Mr. Levine was with us, and he talked about the continuing need for SEL support, particularly at the elementary level. This 1.5 FTE district-wide SEL support are the social-emotional coaches that we have added at the elementary schools. We talked about this as part of the townwide override, a lot with the community. And our goal had been to place one SEL coach at each elementary school, and this would help us to fulfill that promise to the community. In addition, it would also really be supportive, particularly as we know from the pandemic needs, coming out of the pandemic with the increased burden on our school psychologists, the increase to their time to being able to test and assess kids, provides them less time to actually help teachers with coaching in classrooms, to provide structural support for kids and their behaviors and emotions. So they are hoping to increase that 1.5 FTE this to next year. Also, this was a really interesting conversation about a position that we already have. So we have a BCBA, so a behavioral consultant that's tied to our autism program at the Lynch School. Currently, this position is contracted, so it is part of our budget, but under contracted services. The, Ms. Gerard would like to move it into our budget. It would be cost-neutral to us since it's something that we are currently already paying for. It would just make the position a 1.0 FTE that is easier for us to then see year over year and be able to keep consistency of staff with as well. So it is something that we already have built in.
And I'll speak to this one, because this is different from the meeting the other night.
Okay.
So we had Mandarin in the Level Two priorities, when in fact, we have students at McCall right now who are coming up. So it's really, this is an extension of the program, or it's kind of an enrollment issue, because we have those kids coming up and we don't want to leave them. You started the program at the middle school smartly to try, create that feeder system. We can't leave those, we can't leave this group of kids just, you know, hanging. So I've made a change to bring this into Level One priority. And as you can see, that's a .4 FTE.
Mr. Brady?
And just on the SEL support, I just wanted to further clarify that this will make sure that at every elementary school, we have relatively the same level of SEL support. So it's really making sure that we have that equitably across the district at all the elementary schools. And these are individuals who do work directly with students. Of course, they also coach, but they, they work directly with students. And so if students are upset and need support, these are the people who are there to step in and do that. So I can't, I can't emphasize enough how important they are.
And right now, we do have the support at all five elementary schools, but we don't have the dedicated building-based person at every elementary school. So we, so that, that's the part that would be equitable about it, is schools wouldn't have to then be sharing this SEL support. And as Mr. Brady said, when they're working directly with students, then they're, they're able to be there all day, every day, and it's not, students don't have crisis on schedule, crises on schedule.
That's the problem.
So it's important to have somebody there to be able to support teachers in their work directly with kids, students in their work directly with kids. But that only happens when we can have somebody in the building all the time. And I like to, I'm happy to see that Mandarin's moved up, because I actually wondered about that the other day. And that's also a commitment we made to the community when we added Mandarin as World Language. I'll, I'll pull my Chris Nixon hat on for a minute and say, I remember a time when we only offered Mandarin at the high school through online programming and student self-study. And we knew that we really wanted to be able to provide that to kids beginning at middle school. And when we moved World Language down to sixth grade, so I feel like this is something else that's fulfilling a long-term commitment that we've made to the community to build up over time.
Can I just take my hat back? And I'll offer, in fact, when we, we started Mandarin at the high school, we did actually have somebody teaching it, but it was just a fraction of an FTE. And then that person was just looking for more opportunity, naturally. It's very hard to find someone qualified to teach, particularly someone who's only looking for a fraction of time. So that actually, that's, someone left, we tried hard to hire someone, and then we pivoted, I think it was a Middlebury College online program or something, to sort of support those kids who'd already started. That was our real mistake as a district, is we, we tried to seed Mandarin at the high school instead of doing it at the middle school and then sort of growing it over time. We have, as of this afternoon, I think, 40, 41 kids taking Mandarin in eighth grade.
Excellent.
At McCall, 41. And they're, the vast majority of them, I assume, are going to show up at Winchester High School next year. So I think, it just shows us it's a very successful program.
Might have moved to Level One priority after some conversations with members of this community, so.
And then these are our Level Two priorities. So these are identified needs primarily, primarily at the high school, to be able to expand some of the programming there based on departmental requests. It sounds like Mr. Mahoney's also been talking with student, to students regarding their requests and thinking around some of this. The first request comes from the math department and stats and computer science. Many of our students take multiple math classes, and this is an area in particular where I believe they're seeing large class sizes, and they'd like to be able to continue to offer these classes to as many students as possible, but not see class sizes over 30. The English department is looking to overhaul particularly the grade 11 classes by offering some more choice and flexibility, expanding the canon of literature that they're able to offer through the English classes there. So they're looking for just .2 more FTE there as well. And in technology, as, as we have all talked about here at the table fairly often, we've also invested in technology here in the district and are interested in technology and innovation. This brings the tech off, or the tech FTE up to 1.0, and we'd be able to then expand our offerings there Along with our Level Two priorities, we're looking at the expanding role of our assistant principals in the elementary schools. Similar to the SEL coordinators, our assistant, many of our assistant principals are only dedicated half-time to our buildings. And the increasing needs both to support special education and social-emotional learning and contact with parents in the community are, is an ever-expanding role. And we would like to be able to move Ambrose, Lincoln, and VO assistant principals from halftime positions up to full-time. Lynch Elementary already has a full-time assistant principal, so this would be moving these elementary schools in alignment with those. I'm sure Mr. Brady can speak more to the assistant principal role, but I didn't cover that one quite well enough.
No, I think you did it. And can we, just to clarify, Morocco's status?
I was just going to ask about that.
So Morocco has a full-time person in the role.
Got it.
It's not a full-time assistant principal, which is the difference between Morocco and Lynch, because that position also handles special education.
Yep.
And just to be clear, and for those watching, and if any of the assistant principals are watching, this is a, this is a budget conversation right now. There are people attached to these positions with various responsibilities. So, you know, those conversations have not happened. We're not making any assumptions. If we are able to move forward on this as a Level Two priority this year, then we would obviously, we need to work through the personnel components of this. So I just want to make sure that, put that out there.
Oh, yeah. I was just about to ask, what happens if some of the assistant principals are halftime and part-time assistant principal, but then also serving in another capacity at their school?
And that was the question that I did not want to answer.
Okay.
No, because you're right. It is complicated, and it's complicated with a lot of, for a lot of reasons, not, not the least of which is also, we, we have special education supervisors currently. At Morocco, the full-time assistant principal is halftime assistant and halftime special education supervisor. So we would just need to work, like everything, we would need to work through the logistics of this, because we've got great people, and we want to make sure that everyone is, you know, where they need to be.
Absolutely. So the rollover budget then comes in at a 3.87 increase over this year's budget. Maintenance of effort, adding in those additional mandated costs for primarily around special education, would be a 5.67 increase over this year's budget. Priority one would bring us up to a 6% request over this year's budget increase. And adding in priority two would bring our ask up to a 6.34. As Dr. Hackett noted, there is still some work to be done on this budget. We would like to see that percent increase be able to be reduced, if we can do so, if at all possible. And particularly, I believe, around the rollover maintenance of effort budgets, there's still some numbers to be crunched and some work to go back and make sure that those are as solid as we can have them moving forward. So any feedback or questions from the committee on any of those?
And I would just note that even at the 6.34%, we're still below the 7% inflation this year, so.
God.
Just want to make that clear.
That's depressing.
That is depressing. Thank you.
But just to put it in context of, you know, the economy, the United States, and finance, I would want people to understand that.
It is an important point.
I have a couple of questions and comments.
Mr. Nixon?
So to that first slide, contractual salaries and transportation, I just want to clarify. So that transportation line doesn't include any increases for athletic transportation, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That'll be driven more by the pattern of queues and scheduling.
Yeah. So I think it would be helpful to check in with Mark Aria on this, because some committee members will remember, we discussed about a year and a half ago, some of the MIAA divisional realignments, and there may be some more travel for some of our teams. I realize COVID has thrown a huge wrench into this, but eventually we'll get on the backside of it. And I feel like for some of our teams, we're not always kind of measuring up to the transportation expectations anyway as a baseline, and would really encourage the subcommittee to look at that very hard and, and, and talk about it. But certainly for any changes that are coming away, one can frame those as a mandated expense if we have any increased transportation costs on the athletic side. The, Vincent Owen, LBLD is sort of interesting to me. It, I feel like, and this is really something we might get out of a presentation, presentation from Mr. Gerard on a more regular basis, but when, when, back we were looking at the budget for like, I think FY18, we actually had an LBLD program for kids in grades three, four, and five. Prior to that, I think we also were supporting some kids in second grade. And, you know, this is a district where the resources follow the students.
Exactly.
I realize in any given year, things are going to shift a little bit. I think it would be helpful for this committee, and certainly for FinCom and others, as we start to tell this story, to maybe in a more fulsome way, kind of describe what that LBLD program looks like today, who it serves, how it's organized, and, you know, is this ask here to bring in some teaching support that just isn't there today? Are we bolstering what's there today? We don't have to talk about it right now, but it, you know, it's clear there's a request, but I think what's absent is maybe a little more of the context to that. And, you know, in prior years, this is something, obviously, Pam would speak about, because this falls into the sped frame.
Chris, I can, I can tell you what she shared with us in the meeting, was that it is program expansion, because there are more students, particularly at the younger grades, that they're trying to bring in, not trying, there are more second graders that will be coming into the program next year. And the program right now, as it stands, isn't going to be able to serve the needs of the anticipated number of students that will be in the program next year, and that she anticipates needing a dedicated four, five classroom.
So, so to me, that's a very positive message, right?
Yes.
Because if we go back to the creation of the SLCs to begin with, which was a way to avoid the out-of-district placements, so many families have told us their preference is to have their kids in Winchester, if not at their neighborhood elementary school at one of the other four. And, and I think people have, have shown that based on how the enrollment has gone. So it's really, it's a wonderful problem to have if the enrollment is going up in this program, in, in my estimation, anyway. So that, there's a good story there to tell, and I hope that you guys will, will share that with FinCom. On the, on the assistant principal piece at the elementary level, a question that I don't expect to have an answer for right now, but I'd like to understand, how are our elementary principals doing in terms of their teacher evaluations? And do they feel like they have adequate time? That was a fundamental reason why we even created the AP position at the elementary level. That coincided with the new teacher evaluation tool a few years ago. Our principals just didn't have time getting called into one crisis after another. And so there was a lot of discussion about just what kind of investment would be needed. There were some unique issues around Lynch that sort of suggested that we should make an additional investment, and we did that. So we brought that position up to a 1.0 at Lynch for specific reasons at a specific time. So I think what would be helpful here is to just understand, in lieu of saying, well, we have a full-time at Lynch and we don't elsewhere, so we want to bring them up, a clearer message about either what is the problem we're trying to solve, or what is the need that we're trying to address. A component of that might be teacher evaluation. And what's great about that is, I'm sure the district has data on that, right? I mean, we keep tabs on that through, if not ASP, then something else. So there should be a way to kind of gauge our administrators' progress on a building-by-building basis. If that's part of the rationale, that's good. I'm just curious what else there is. And we've already talked about And we've already talked about some of the unique building-by-building scenarios that we can sort of find ourselves facing when you've got a specific individual who is a one point oh employee, but only a half-time this plus a half-time that. So I think, again, that almost then makes the argument for a real clarity of message, because if we were going to follow and say, each of the four elementary schools deserves that extra half-time investment, Morocco should be on that list, but it would suggest you may have two assistant principals, and they're each half-time. I mean, that's one way to do it, not saying we should. That's that kind of, that conversation that we have to have, and probably not around this table. So I just think a clearer message about either the problem we're trying to solve or the need that's there that we're trying to address would be really helpful.
Lord, do you want to speak to the evaluations? I know you've been tracking, or you have the data on how our principals are doing in terms of timelines?
Yes, so we have to meet these deadlines, so I'm pleased to tell you, we are. And that's the good news in all of us. And I think, Chris, yeah, there's a lot of conversation that needs to be had, data that needs to be looked at, too, exactly what the added value would be. We've been talking a lot about instructional leadership, and what that looks like, and what that sounds like, and how this role or others could support the principals in that effort.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I would just also add, I think, you know, we're in year two of COVID, right? And the complications of managing the schools is being felt in a way that everyone is feeling it. I mean, the assistant principal's covering classrooms, the assistant principal's doing duties that they have to do just to manage the day, to make sure kids are secure and safe. So I think we're, we are hearing this administratively from the elementary principals at a time when they're really feeling it, like they really want to have, or wish they had someone in the buildings full-time. That may not always be true, let's hope it's not always true. But I do think that when they talk about it, it is all about really wanting to make sure that they continue to be strong instructional leaders.
The principals want to be strong instructional leaders.
Mr. Brady?
I would just add on to that point that, you know, the assistant principal role is also another social emotional support to the students. And I think that's the real benefit as well, and an important piece of it. And obviously, to your point about the evaluations, yes, we could, the principals, if they had to evaluate forty teachers, they could evaluate forty teachers, but it wouldn't be done well. You know, the less people you're evaluating, the better the process, the more useful the process is going to be. And so I think that's also what gets at it. For it to be useful for the teachers, you need to make sure that it's a reasonable amount of people that the principals are actually evaluating. And I, just myself having seen the difference, I've seen schools where there's about the four hundred-ish students we have, and those that have a principal on their own, and those that have a principal and assistant principal, there's a marked difference. And anyone who would argue otherwise is, I don't think, being very genuine about it.
Well, and to Mr. Brady's point, there may be, what may help tell the story, and I just want to be clear, it's not really the school committee's story to tell. I feel like it's the administration's story to tell or articulate. But the fact that we've had a full-time at Lynch for a while, you've got an opportunity to sort of compare and contrast, you know, what is one principal able to do, the others not? Where are those sort of moments of stress? What are the consequences when XYZ happens at a certain time of day, and that assistant principal's not available? So it's just about clarity of message. It's not an insignificant thing to add this, and that was certainly the case when we first brought the APs on board. We had to have a really clear and strong message, and we did. That was, you know, a moment in time, and that was seen as a step. There was a lot of conversation around the committee table about whether those should all be one point os, and the recommendation from administration was not at this time. So it's just about being really clear about, you know, what the message is. The last thing, comment I'll make, and then I'll shut up, is it would be helpful for me to see some sort of a placeholder here for schedule of curriculum changes, schedule of course changes, either at McCall or at the high school. Again, we've been, you know, the apple cart has been upset here a little bit by COVID, but we've tried in recent years to have conversations around schedule of courses before the committee is voting on a budget. We had, many years ago, situations where we had sort of proposals, right, at the high school level to do something, but we couldn't do it because we were budget limited, meaning those were conversations that were happening in like, late February. So imagine before Springtown meeting, but after we'd already voted the budget, and the school committee felt like its hands were tied. There was something we'd love to fund, seemed like it'd be a strong priority, but we'd already voted the budget. So some sort of a placeholder in here, because I do know those conversations will be coming. I don't know that we're going to have those conversations, though, before we vote the budget, unless you're a miracle worker. It'd be good to have something here as a placeholder.
Dr. Hackett, aren't those the priority number two that are on for the high school?
Well, priority two for the high school, but I think in general perspective, Dr. Ellen O'Malley will be joining Finance Subcommittee tomorrow to talk about curriculum related on a district-wide basis, like pre-K through twelve basis. So, you know, I mean, I think what I've learned about the administration here, and learned about Winchester, including the school committee, is that people are really good at finding money and making it work in ways that are outside of the operating budget, or just being able to do it more efficiently. So that is also in the mix, and maybe I should have said that on the front end. I mean, we, you know, we will be looking, obviously, at every other funding source to try to provide some relief on the operating budget. You know, like I said, the big number really is obviously contracted, the contracts in terms of negotiation process, but also the special education tuition line. We've got to make some decisions around that. But I also would add, just that we recognize that, you know, six point three four percent is significant and not your typical historical budget increase year over year. But I have to be honest and tell you that, you know, the rollover is three point eight seven. So, you know, that's the foundational starting point, and that doesn't even take into consideration getting to the maintenance of effort, which are things we have to do. So, you know, that's really the work that remains, and we don't, you know, to your point, Ms. Nixon, I appreciate the point, you know, that placeholder number is important for us. And as we think through, you know, what is going to be the priorities for next year, and what is going to be, you know, a budget that we, that you, as a school committee, can feel like you can support, and, you know, that includes a number, a percentage that you feel is supportable, as well as the, making sure that we're doing what we need to do for kids.
In other words, so I think that thirty-nine thousand and change on that high school slide, to me, that's a little more prescriptive. So those are specific recommendations based on, you know, enrollment in specific classes. It's good that that's on the radar, but what I'm describing is more about what do we want to be teaching? Is there a new offering? Do we want to expand? So what are the kids asking for and so forth? It's a little bit beyond maybe these specific items on the level two priority slide, though I'm glad they're here. Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the FY twenty-three budget at this point in time?
And we do have an additional Finance Subcommittee meeting tomorrow afternoon. So if anybody has individual questions, that if you're mulling over this this evening, I'd suggest that you get them to Dr. Hackett before our meeting tomorrow afternoon, because Mr. Brady and I will be happy to go over those and see where we can really work on this budget.
Did you want to make any further comment on the memo about the, to the Policy Subcommittee?
Not other than, it came to our attention through Mr. Rome and Dr. Hackett, that we had some student accounts that hadn't been spent down for the last several years from some graduating senior classes. We don't have a policy on what happens to those funds after students and classes graduate. So Dr. Hackett actually made the recommendation to us that we send this information back to the Policy Subcommittee to investigate establishing a policy on unused student account funds and what happens with them. Mr. Brady had made the recommendation that we, that the Policy Subcommittee could look in to establishing a Winchester High School potentially scholarship fund, so that students with, student classes with excess funds to be returned to them could instead place those funds into a student activity account, or we could place a sundown on when the funds would be used by, and if they weren't used by a certain date, then they would automatically move over into that fund. But the funds do belong to the students themselves and the student class officers. So they would have a say in how those funds are used as well.
And we do have a Policy Subcommittee meeting coming up this Thursday to address this as one of the topics.
So I had one suggestion on that, which would be to include the comptroller in your actual discussions. So our auditor, I'm happy to pass along a copy, our town auditor actually did audit student activity accounts once upon a time, made some observations, and noted there are some Masbo rules, which I'm sure Peter's familiar with, that apply to this. So they're certainly subject to the town audit, and I think Stacy would be a perfect person to have in on the conversation, because she's really good at sort of anticipating whether, you know, a proposal meets the threshold, you know, by a wide margin or narrowly or what have you. And I think, you know, she's super, super busy, but I think she would appreciate being a part of the conversation. And I'll get you guys a copy of this.
Thank you, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Mr. Rome, do you want to speak to the Masbo?
Well, yes, the recommendation on this came up from Stacy. She was reviewing the student activity accounts of last year, and this was their recommendation to us. So she's already been involved in the conversation. And it was really based on that, that we brought this to the attention of the Finance Subcommittee, because it isn't, it wasn't really clear what the, that there was a policy, as you pointed out.
Right, no, I'm just saying, if there is a policy, if there's any adjustment to a policy, just that Stacy has an opportunity to sort of see.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, because that's going to direct what we do moving forward.
The practice had been in the past to return the funds to the treasurer of the graduating class. And so the question, and since that really is not stated in any explicit policy, their question to us was, do we going forward want to continue with that? And so that's really the issue in front of the committee. And so you're right, in terms of asking, having her in the discussion, if we were to change, to get her input would be valuable.
Principals, and assistant principals don't want to hear, but the best practice in managing student activity accounts is to run it through the regular requisition PO cycle. That way, it's clear, there's a record of it, and, you know, but unfortunately or fortunately, schools don't operate, always operate that way, and there are times when people need to access funds because something has come up. So that, I think, just in terms of our business practices, is another conversation beyond the policy, is how are we doing, how are we managing those within the school system?
You'll find there were some recommendations.
I would imagine there probably are.
Yeah.
And MAS C has sample policy on this as well, so it's just, it's unusual that we don't, so.
Glad you're looking at it.
Okay, with that, we will move on to the next item, which is an update on our ARPA requests. Dr. Hackett, you've been busy working on this submission.
So thanks to all the administrators who've been also been part of this conversation. We submitted an initial draft recommendation to Beth Rudolph at the town. This was, this is actually due on Friday. This doesn't need your approval, it's not a requirement for approval, but what we wanted to share with you tonight, and that shared with the Finance Subcommittee, was what we are planning to submit for feedback. Obviously, we have time to take additional feedback before the fourteenth. So this is actually the old request, and that's unfortunate. Hold on just a second, please.
While you're looking for something more current, I've also been made aware that the Disability Access Commission has also put in a request through ARPA. It's either for sixty or eighty thousand dollars for assisted learning devices for our students. I don't know if you have all the detail on that. I don't have a whole lot, but there, we can maybe follow up on a little more detail about what it is they were looking for, but I appreciated where that request was coming from. Might specifically have been sort of assisted listening devices.
Okay, there. Sorry for the interruption. Brief break in the action. So after further conversation with town, also with Finance Subcommittee, and one of the things you'll see in here, which is a change from what we had originally thought about, so the town is committed to purchasing, I want to say fifteen thousand test kits for COVID. That was one of the things that we had in our initial request. That will be shared with us. We do obviously get a lot of test kits from the state, but there, it would be helpful for us to have a access to a supply of them for situations where we can't get them, or we just want to kind of expand testing in a particular reason, for a particular reason in a school. So we took that request out, understanding that the town had made that commitment. And the town also has made a commitment in their ARPA funding for additional contact tracing, which that conversation may change a little bit, too, given what we saw come out of the department today. So stay tuned. But that is in their request bucket right now, and not in ours. What we did put in and focused on, and kind of going back to, the number's a little bit different, but going back to the budget presentation, we had the social emotional coaches, or social emotional learning positions in the budget as a priority one. We are asking for them here. So that would have a direct impact in reducing the operating budget. We think that offers a perfect opportunity to seed that, those positions. This was really from the Finance Committee, Finance Subcommittee, and a recommendation from them, part of the discussion, that if, the priority of those positions, as Mr. Brady talked about, can't be overemphasized. We know we're seeing kids who are more dysregulated, and we don't know how, that's not going to change soon. So we know we need the support. It does fit under behavioral health care, under the ARPA funding, and you can see what the request is. That represents actually two positions. So I believe the number I had on the slide was for one and a half positions, and I think it was a little bit higher, so we had to adjust that. But, so that is one of our priorities, under Priority Area Two on ARPA funding. Number, request, the next request, under assistance to households, internet access, or digital literacy and assistance. Jen, can you speak to this a little bit?
Sure, so we have some families, obviously, we gave out Chromebooks and some hotspots to kind of amp up their ability to get internet at a faster speed or any speed in some houses during the pandemic, but then people turned things back in when we came back to school, because we need them in the schools. But now we see we have some families that just don't have access to these materials, and students are in and out due to their own quarantining or someone else in the family being ill. And we want to make sure that for those families, or families where there aren't devices at all in the household, that they have at least a Chromebook and access to internet, knowing that they could be in and out at any time.
Could you also speak to the town's networking?
Sure. So all of our schools, when we did our, back when we did our Powered Up Initiative, all of our schools, we built in a redundancy, so that, we have two network providers, so if one goes down, we still stay up. But at the time, we weren't able to do Morocco, and it was to do with the connection of fiber and what the town was able to do. It also meant some places within the town didn't have what they needed either for redundancy. But we're now in a place that that can be done, and we just need the funds. So we're looking to do this jointly with the town, so the rest of their buildings that didn't have it get redundancy, as well as Morocco now being on our route for redundancy.
So again, I mean, what's been really nice in working with town administrators and town officials is that, you know, we're having, we talk all the time. And this is a good example of how we're cooperating on money that will be available to the town and to the school, and trying to find ways to work together on it to really kind of maximize the benefit. So request number four, or comes under Priority Six A, education new expanded or enhanced early services. Jen, I would mind if you would speak to this as well?
I'm sorry, the thing just, what did we say? What was that?
This is the pre-K, pre-early childhood.
Sure, so we're not really sure what we could do around pre-K. You know, we have these federal discussions, we have, you know, the state discussions on what's happening, but we also have, you know, our own discussions. There's a pretty small number of our students that actually attend our preschool program. There's many other great programs in town. So that's why we really don't know where we would go with it. What we do know is we want all families to have an opportunity to be in a preschool program. What we do know is we want all families to have an opportunity to be in a preschool program, whether that is, you know, we certainly couldn't move quickly to something that would provide for anyone anyway, but some kind of plan with the other organizations in town. And with identifying families that don't have access right now, what may be the reasons for that? Are they just choosing not to? Do we need to shift and change or offer other things? So we'd like to, in the first year, kind of explore what our possibilities might be around that, or what the needs are of the community. And then match up what the needs of the community are with what's feasible for us to do. Of course, this all ties into, right, the Lynch project, all these pieces, you know, where do we house? If we do expand the number of students we have, but we have other ways that we could expand day or year now too, without needing more space. So we want to look at all of those issues, see what we can come up with the first year kind of studying it, and then, you know, make a proposal so we kind of put a placeholder in that there might be costs tied to if we do try to do some kind of expansion into the future years. And I think this money goes through '25 or '26. So it allows us to have kind of that two-tiered process with this.
I'm just going to let you keep going.
I was going to say, is that Dr. Ellen Emma?
I'm so worried by this time of day, I don't know what topic we're on.
We are on evidence-based educational services and practices to address the academic needs of students, including tutoring, summer, after school.
So last summer, we ran our kind of pilot program. We are opposed to calling things learning loss because, you know, there's many things our students learned and gained during this process. There may be areas that different students need to strengthen and grow. Certainly, we know students crave that time to be with others and to learn and develop their social, interpersonal and interpersonal skills. So last summer, we kind of launched our summer program with humanities and STEM. And we built SEL into all of those pieces. And families could choose, and, you know, everybody got something, but we would love to be able to expand the opportunities. And we also would like to be able to expand school days to be able to do that. This isn't the year that's going to happen. You know, we're struggling to staff during the day, never mind expanding things. But we would like to, again, that money going through '25 or '26, we'd like to have the opportunity to do summer programs and extended day programs. And rather than targeting, saying, you know, this student needs this, allowing for there to be choice with all these pieces, for teachers to recommend their guide, but for families also to decide what works best for them in terms of the day or time of year, and what areas to focus on. And we'd like to offer that, I don't know if we'd like to offer this forever, but we'd like to, at least for the next two or three years, continue to provide those options.
Is the, are the funding requests in here, are they annual amounts over multi-year period?
It's one time.
No, this is one-time funds.
And then we spread it out over there?
Right, right. So the money is available through '25, I believe.
We just have to spend it during that period?
Correct. We have to commit it by, commit it by next year. Right, right, right.
That's true.
But that's, I mean, it's still doable. You know, obviously, it's one-time money. We see this as seed money, with the exception of the social emotional. We would then, if that, if we wanted to keep, if we want to keep any of this, we'd have to absorb it into the budget over a period of time.
Well, and ARPA requires that it can only be used for certain areas, which is why our requests are around specific things as well.
That's it, actually.
Any questions from the committee?
What are the next steps from management? Do you have a timeline?
We have to have this to Ms. Randolph by the end of the week. Rudolph, I'm sorry.
But then once management gets it, then...
I do not know the answer to that question. They have got to unwind, I think, some things. There were a lot, the process was, had been started, so they do have a lot of requests that came in. So they will, and just informal conversations, obviously, they're going to need to come through, come up with some kind of ranking process, or some way to evaluate all the requests on their own merit. Because I believe, I know that there are multimillion dollars more requests than there are funds. So there clearly needs to be a vetting process.
The landscape has certainly changed dramatically since the requests were first solicited.
Absolutely. Yeah, it has. Yeah, all around.
And I believe, does the select board then have to sign off on those as well?
I'm not, I don't want to speak, I don't know what their process will be. I would imagine that the select board would be weighing in either whether they need to actually approve the funding or the expenses of the funds, or whether or not they, it's, you know, kind of like what we're doing tonight. So definitely going to, yeah, they'll be getting feedback.
Mr. Brady?
I just want to appreciate the fact that the preschool, pre-K expansion investigation is in there. I think that's really important. I've spoken about that on a number of occasions, and so I'm very happy to see it in there and very appreciative that it's been put in in the way that it was.
It's definitely the right thing to do, and I think it's a great opportunity to everything Jen said, for us to really kind of explore it and look at it and see whether or not, you know, what we can do. And to expand the thinking, it's perfect timing with the Lynch project for that discussion or that exploration to happen. So I really do think the timing is really, is really good.
And I guess I am just glad to see the agility from the team in being able to pivot and say, oh, I think we need to put our request, we need to focus our request on the social emotional health, behavioral health for our kids. So I think that is a worthy change. Thank you very much.
There's been a lot of pivoting.
Yes.
Rigorous pivoting.
And just one last comment on this. I see a lot of communities across the Commonwealth being able to use these ARPA funds coming out of COVID. I know Dr. Ellen Emma had always talked about COVID silver linings, but I don't think any one of these programs is any less of value than the other, and it's just a unique opportunity to rethink how we best meet students' needs, not from pre-K all the way up to high school. When you think about the expanded learning opportunities, you know, we've always talked about how do you cram more hours in a school day? Well, this is, might be how we were able to do it. So I appreciate, at a time when things are still unsettled, and when we are still struggling with staffing, I appreciate the thoughtfulness of this team to sit down and think about, well, what could we do next? And how could we grow? And how could we innovate around some of these ideas? So I just want to thank you all for not only taking our input, but also the creativity and the willingness to expand programming yourselves. So, thank you.
It's, thank you for the compliment. There's so much talent in the administrative group I'm fortunate to be able to work with. I would just also add, and a little bit to Ms. Nixon's point, I mean, I would have hoped to, we would have been a little bit further along, or I should say me, in terms of really thinking about multi-year budget planning related to goals that are specific to our strategic plan. We're not there, and we kind of made the decision not to be there as part of the goal-setting process. So, you know, we'll continue to play that out. You know, while the school committee needs to adopt a budget and vote a budget, and it needs to be presented, we also know that, I would, I can imagine in prior experiences that things happened over the course of time, from that January 31st or whenever the budget is voted at a town meeting, to September. So there could be other funding opportunities, there could be shifts in personnel, there could be retirements that we don't know about. So that's really trying to establish those priority levels, and to be able to continue to build that out even after the budget is voted, so that we can have a list of things that we could go to if, in fact, we find ourselves in a position where we might be able to do something that's on that level list that we didn't think we could do to begin with. So I don't see this as the end of the conversation in terms of priorities, I guess is the biggest point. And I like the suggestion of the placeholder, because that does give us some flexibility, and it gives us, you know, some ideas that we can put into that box.
Okay. We will move on to our next item of business, which is the Lynch MSBA project update.
So I will just tell you that there was a lot of work done on the education plan. You know, it's one of those things where we luckily, again, have a lot of talent. Dr. Ellen Emma, Ms. Kirby, and other, and the directors and content people were really able to contribute to this and actually build this out. The document itself is, I think, a pretty streamlined document that reads pretty well. The biggest challenge is taking other people's voices through this and really trying to make it sound like it's all been written by, you know, a collective, a group of people that are relatively on the same page. And then also trying to really kind of weave through the goals throughout. So I, you know, I, it's like, I felt like I was writing my dissertation in the final hours with this, that you just never really want to let it go. You just know that there's a typo in there, you know there's something in there that you wish you could, and you're just never done. This is a document that you could just never be done with. The good news is that we'll continue to be able to talk about this as we start going into the next steps of the MSBA process, because this is more about, if you could do whatever you want to do to support the program, what would you do, and how would you see your program if you had the ability to do that? Then it starts to get into the more, kind of the reality of, all right, now we're going to design a building based on what you said. And then how does that change your thinking about this? And what are the adjacencies of spaces? So it really is kind of a, you know, again, it's an ongoing process, which is a good thing. We also, I, you know, we really try to work in the voice of the people who were on that visioning committee. Almost 20 people involved in that process. One of the things that, you know, I could, again, one of those things I would have liked to add a little bit more, but I didn't have time. But what we did do is kind of go in, and these call-out boxes are really direct quotes, for the most part, somewhat paraphrased, but really kind of direct quotes from people in the visioning process that we picked up along the way. So I wanted to do the call-out boxes, one, because visually, I think it breaks up the document a little bit, makes it a little bit more, you know, a little easier to read or pleasing to read. And it also really highlights the work that those people, the 20 people did, because they spent a lot of time, they put a lot of energy, and they put a lot of effort into this. And, you know, it is much appreciated. So that was one of the ways that, you know, we tried to highlight the work of that group in addition to weaving in, you know, what was discussed, like, for example, here, on the guiding principles, these, those bullet points to the left of that call-out box were the top ones that came out of that design team process. So just to give you some sense of kind of how we got here with this. But other than that, we were able to get this out the door, and that was a significant piece of work, and I think hopefully a good piece of work. I will also add, I've done several projects, I've done several education plans. This is the first place I've ever done it in like three months. So, you know, this was a, this is not the typical timeline that a school system has to put together an education plan. I just think people came together so well, worked so well together. You know, the consultants did a nice job with the visioning, but, you know, it's a credit to people in this room and within the school system that we were able to get that together and be, I think, somewhat cohesive in a fairly short period of time.
So this has gone to the MSBA already?
So this is just one piece. Can you, do you mind going to lynch2025.com for a minute?
I'm going to go there right now.
Bring that up. So the, so the, you know, two or three meetings ago, TAPPE was here, and we walked through the actual space program, or what you might call the space template. That's included, so if you scroll down to the bottom, Dr. Hackett, you'll just, well, it's, from time to time, we check in on the schedule. This was a real milestone today. And so it was sent electronically, and I think also in hard copy. So the preliminary design program's a large package. It's got that ed program that Dr. Hackett just shared. It has the space template that you've already seen, has a summary of the visioning sessions. Those were held over, you know, three different periods. And for those, and I think we were all watching the meeting at the EFPBC last week on the 10th. We had, and actually, Dr. Hackett, if you don't want to go, go to the design page up top. Remind people that lynch2025.com is live. If you go under home and click on design, we're going to continue to sort of update this with information. And if you scroll down a little bit, those thumbnails are small, but the resolution's there. And as you see on my iPad, it's also mobile-friendly. So what we're showing here are those 11 first, kind of just very, very conceptual kind of thumbnails. How would a two- or three-story building sit on the site? And there's information there about phasing, and when would construction start, when would it stop? The website explains that some of these were ruled out early by the EFPBC. In some instances, some of these options are not complete until well into 2026. So that was a non-starter. You've got some options, including the one on the right in seven. It's built out there in the middle of the floodplain with a lot of regulatory, you know, sort of conservation restrictions and so forth. So the design team really did not feel comfortable pursuing that, but that was something worth looking at. So we've narrowed it down based on that EFPBC meeting last week. We went from 11 to six. All of these are included in the PDP. So the MSBA wants to know what it is you've been looking at. They also want to know that we've begun to weed some things out, so we have. So the other announcement tonight is the EFPBC will meet again next week, Monday, the 24th, at 6:00 PM. And the goals around that are going to be an update on those visioning sessions that Dr. Hackett just described, and what are some of the highlights and takeaways from those. Then we'll pivot to a summary of that educational program, that 50, 55-page document that has been shared with you. It will give the architects an opportunity to kind of talk about how both of these exercises kind of inform their thoughts about the design of the building. And then we're going to pivot to a conversation around program packaging, or the relationships of some program elements to another. So in other words, if it's a three-story building, what is the grade level packaging that makes sense? If it's a two-story building, what about that? You know, ideas like a pre-K, and we've already begun to weed some of these out based on this matrix, but if you think about it, a pre-K can almost be kind of a self-contained thing within the building, and there's pros and cons to that. One might also argue it'd be deliberately kind of almost co-located with kindergarten, because those classrooms are really very similar architecturally and are somewhat fungible. So that might give the district some flexibility long-term. And just concepts about grade-level learning, sort of learning groups, or I forget the term.
Neighborhoods and...
Say it, what'd you say it again?
Neighborhoods is one of the, yeah, right.
So some concepts that have sort of come out of the visioning, I think will be interesting for the EFPBC to talk about. And the whole point in really laying this out on the 24th is give the opportunity for the project team to sort of understand if, now that we're down to six, are there a couple of those six that maybe are less likely to accommodate some of those aspirational goals? The EFPBC needs to basically wino six down to three or four, and then kind of down to two. And our hard stop is really going to be later in February, when we have to really identify our preferred option. But having said that, the MSBA still requires officially that we consider the reno option, an ad reno option, and then basically a new build. So the renovation option, which we've already ruled out, is a practical matter because it just doesn't meet the ed program, it's not big enough, for one thing. Is that option on the left R1? It's the cheapest option, but it's also the least amount of square footage and just doesn't meet the needs of the district. So it's important for us, I think, just to be clear, because some of these are public documents, that when we get to further steps in the process, and we still say, here's a reno option under consideration and an ad reno, it doesn't mean that the EFPBC is sort of not clear about what the preference is. It's just that the state really requires us to evaluate that. So I hope that's clear. And we'll do another webinar format and hope that we'll get more members of the public to come watch. We had over 100 members of the public participate last week, which was just terrific. And the last bit of just interesting anecdote I will share...
Chris, where can people find the link for that webinar on Monday for the EFPBC?
So we just confirmed the meeting today, and they will find it on the Clerk's website.
On the government section?
The government calendar, yep.
Will you put it up here as well?
Thank you for the question. So we did on the website last week provide the link as well. So that might be up as late as, I mean, excuse me, as early as tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
We just, typically, we get that link when we develop the hard agenda, so we're fleshing that out today. But that will happen very soon. And I'm collecting some data on the website, and I think it's very interesting that one of the most popular pages beyond just basically the homepage itself and basic information about the Lynch project, is the page that asks, what about Morocco? So I'm really, I'm glad that that's there, because I think that that will and will continue to be a really important message for all of us, that we are as committed to an eventual replacement of Morocco as we are at Lynch. So that's it, and we'll just keep providing more and more information on the website as it becomes available.
One small detail, does the site, it shows that a couple of these, does it show which ones are the six that were selected?
Not yet, but it will very soon. So we're actually getting a little more, the stamp, the thumbnails are pretty sort of basic. So TAPPE is actually working on kind of a more detailed grid of those six with some kind of key bullets or attributes, so you can better kind of compare and contrast. So yes... So yes, we'll have that...
Didn't you just say the next meeting, you're going to go down to three to four?
Say that again?
The next meeting, you're going to go down to three to four from those six?
Well, eventually, we need to kind of get down to one, so we're going to see if there aren't a couple that might naturally sort of fall off the table at the next meeting, but we'll have to see how that conversation goes.
I was also wondering which were the six, but then I just figured it was because I couldn't see them.
Yeah.
But, okay.
Yeah, so the, the paragraph there on the website basically just says, look, these are the 11 we started, if, we've ruled out some, for example, this and this, but, but we will absolutely have, you know, some more information, so here is, here's what they are. And again, it's, this is somewhat dynamic, right? So there will be content that's here today that will be probably gone in six weeks, because it just won't be relevant anymore.
Can I just ask one quick process question? When you guys are winnowing those down at EFPBC, is Dr. Hackett and yourself, are they the only two educators that are sitting at the table when that happens?
So I don't think of myself as an educator.
Well, you're a school committee member, so you're...
No, I just want to be sure I under, can you say your question again?
Is everybody else just a building and services individual?
Um...
Is there any other educational input into winnowing those buildings down? Because I see a big difference between what's architecturally correct and what's educationally correct, and I'm wondering how we get an equal voice in that process.
So that's a really good question, and this is why the superintendent is the standing member of the committee. So you can, you can be sure, like, the EFPBC, there'll be a lot of opinions about things like envelope design, building system design, but the things, and we were just having this conversation with Dr. Hackett earlier today, that with the EFPBC chair, when we talk about things like the program adjacencies that seem the most appropriate, that's really going to be the EFPBC basically looking at this guy to say, tell us what and why.
Okay.
Dr. Hackett's, he's the leader of the district, and, you know, was the force behind with support, but really authored that educational program as well. So all things sort of educational, I think that kind of drive how this project evolves, really come from Dr. Hackett. And there is an interest in Dr. Ellen Emma joining us as well on the 24th, I broke that to her earlier today.
Good.
Very quickly, as he moved through my office.
Yeah. My doctor, Ellen Emma, blah, 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 the 24th, 6:00 PM, we'll see you there.
Dr. Ellen, I, I didn't mention that to you earlier today, sorry.
All right, you were breaking the other good news to me.
Anyway, I, it's a, I hope I've answered your question, there's a, and this has been the case really for many years, that I think the EFPBC really clearly understands where there are many places along the way where sort of educational, whether it's pedagogy or just philosophy about educational program organization, there are certain things that are just sort of fundamental to how a building supports teaching and learning.
Right.
And that best comes from the superintendent. Having said that, there have been cases, most recently at Winchester High School, the music department, you may recall, where we got pretty far on the project, design development, and, and, and some folks at the high school kind of felt like, you know, there's a piece of this that doesn't quite sit right, there may be a better way to go about this. And I credit, you know, a former superintendent, whose door was open, teachers, directors came in, had a conversation, went to the EFPBC and said, let's like rebuild this part of the box, we can do this better. And they were right, and the results are just outstanding. So it takes a team, but the end of the day, that particular effort at Winchester High School was very much sort of led by our educators.
Right.
If I could follow up on all of that, too, and just say that, once again, going back to the fact that this is not a, this is not the regular timeline.
Right, I know.
So I do think, the good news is that, well, first of all, I want to make sure, I want to leave everybody and tell you that I will not be making the decision by myself in terms of what, it's the next step that's more critical than this one. So, because really, the site's so limited...
Right.
That I think the options that get selected are going to be pretty obvious, in terms of how do we just best use what is a very tight site? Once that decision gets made, then space adjacencies, you know, what classrooms look like, I mean, there will be addition, there'll be some additional time to have those conversations with, with staff, obviously, you know, we don't want to make the mistake of, of not making sure the staff understand, you know, what does a general ed classroom look like?
Right.
You know, it's a standard classroom, here's what it looks like, here's the square footage, but also the conversations with my, with the leadership team, and also having an opportunity to have, you know, maybe bring, maybe it's an opportunity to bring back the visioning group to, to have some of those discussions as well, because they're so well-informed on what we're talking about. So it's still a quick turnaround on that next step, but we're not talking about whether pre-K, we're, we're having conversations about possible adjacencies, and we have to be clear about some of those kinds of things. Obviously, a two-story building versus a three-story building has different implications, just, just division of, it's a math problem at some point.
Yep.
You know, you have so many kids, and how do you break them up? So there are some things that I think are pretty obvious, and I think there are things that are, you know, they are administrative in nature, in terms of knowing how to run a building and what the best, you know, adjacency, use of space would be, depending on the configuration, but I just would want to, you know, there's also going to be opportunity on the 24th, right? That's a public meeting.
Yep.
It's an opportunity for people to hear and give, you know, one more, another chance to, to give some feedback.
Right.
So I, yeah, I just...
I guess I just wanted to make sure, and make sure that also people knew that it wasn't just the EFPBC in a room winnowing down choices, is, you know, as we move forward, that we're also having educators' eyes, teachers' eyes, parents' eyes, you know, on the project, because what looks good on a site, as you said, it's a constrained site, but there were still some pretty distinct options among them, and I want to make sure somebody's looking at it now while we're at this stage and says, that's a terrible place for a playground, you know, or, or it would be, you know, that, this, this building may not be the sighted as well, but the, the outdoor space is better. I, I want to make sure that we have as many eyes on those parts of it, as well as the envelope, and is the ground going to hold the building, and how much does it cost to do this?
But what you just described really does rest with the EFPBC.
Right.
And it really is part of this next conversation, this public meeting, and, and whatever, wherever the EFPBC lands, because they are in, you know, they're going to make the decision around the best use of the site. So people have an opportunity to weigh in on, on that.
Right.
It's, it's just a short window.
Yeah.
Mr. Brady?
I just want to really appreciate Michelle's point, just as an educator who began his career in an open space high school, which if you've ever had the pleasure, is not a great idea.
His time never came.
No offense, Chris, but the architects who came up with that, you know, I'll, I won't share my feelings about open space, but I appreciate the idea of, you know, making sure that just we do have educators. Obviously, educators don't have the architectural building knowledge, but we want to make sure that we're having their voice as well, so I appreciate Michelle's point.
I made that mistake once in my career in Maine, and I never, it was sinks in elementary classrooms.
Right.
And I never lived it down. I'm surprised I'm even employed still, so...
Two, two other quick thoughts, though, to, to, on that particular point. So one of the things that really distinguished TAPA is they got so much experience, not just in educational design, but particularly at the elementary level, so they're working with so many districts like ours, they, when a project goes well, they know it, when they make mistakes, they hear about it, you know, they're pretty good at following up. I know, Michelle, you've previously said, like, what did, what, what can we learn from VO? I mean, I think TAPA is looking, they, they learn from all of their projects, is it really working, particularly those when there's thought about sort of future expansion, and then you come back and then you do it, so is, is the model the same, or is it different? And I'm really impressed so far, you know, with Chris Bleson, who I think speaks, I think he's a, he's...
Yeah, he's grown on me, actually.
Very, very, very good listener, and I think he speaks with a lot of, sort of, let's say, expertise and sincerity on some of the educational program questions that have come up, including just from members of the public. But EFPBC meetings are public meetings, absolutely, you know, welcome the public comment. Again, encourage people, they can fire off questions to the email address, which is And then the last point, too, is one of the critical evaluation factors in all of these schemes that remain, is also just going to be an understanding of swing space, and what's going to be required and, and why. That, that is absolutely going to be a part of this.
Absolutely.
And I think maybe a very, one of, I, I think certainly, a top concern for Lynch families is going to be, you know, there, we may find ourselves pretty quickly finding a scheme where one can say, you know, you can probably do this and only displace eight classrooms. And that might be technically correct, but the bigger question I think the EFPBC wants to tackle is, is that still, you know, the right thing to do? If there's an opportunity to move 12 classrooms out, so you sort of disrupt less students on that site and more flexibility for construction, maybe that's the thing to do. Our last three elementary rebuilds, we've moved all the kids off-site, Ambrose, VO, and Lincoln. And that's going to be a real challenge in this case, given we don't have the kind of spaces available that we used to, but, you know, there may be, there may be an equity conversation, you know, in the town. So swing space, there's no more to say, other than swing space is going to be a really important element of this project for those kids who are Lynchies while we're doing the project. And it's very much going to be of interest to the EFPBC.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and also remembering that swing space is a two-year problem, and we're building a building that we hope lasts at least 50 years, so I also want to make sure we don't lose sight of choosing a building based on swing space. I'd rather solve a two-year swing space problem and have a 50-year building we're happy with.
Yep, agree with you.
That's all well and fine, till parents call me and say...
Although...
What have you done? But it's, you know, to, to Mr. Nixon's point, it, it is a conversation I'll, I'll share with you, that we are certainly having internally.
Yeah.
We want to...
And not that I don't appreciate that it's a problem, but I feel like we can tackle it.
Every school has its, has its character, it has its culture, has, and Lynch in particular is, is a close-knit community.
Yep.
We hear it, we heard it in the visioning process, we hear it, we hear it all the time. And, and, you know, it, it is hard, it's going to be hard. So just helping people manage expectations about what this looks like, the problem is, as I've said it before, and my experience has been, they don't know what it looks like at all, parents and kids, right?
Right.
So to say, you could stay on the site, but there's going to be a lot of disruption with construction, versus, we're going to get you off the site with swing space, well, they don't know, they've not lived either one of those experiences, and I'm just here to tell you, neither one of them are awesome.
Right.
Right? So our number one priority, the EFPBC and all of us in this room collectively, is the safety of our kids, right? So we want to make sure that wherever EFPBC lands, and one of the conversations, is there an option that doesn't require swing space, that removes the construction far enough away from the existing building that we don't have to do that? Not sure if there is or not, but one of the conversations we need to have is just, you know, we need to make sure that people understand that what, the decisions that we need to make around this are, are going to, there's compromise, to your point, because it is a 50-year building. But if my child is going to be a fifth grader in, you know, first year of construction, and my child's been there, my family's been there that whole time, it, we need to understand and recognize that that is, that's painful. And, you know, our goal is to do the best we can to make sure that families feel still connected to Lynch somehow, and, and we have those discussions, so...
I'm just nodding a lot.
Yes, that is, that is going to be a hard conversation.
Yes, it will.
There will be a Lynch Project update on the agenda for the Select Board meeting on February 7th, and at that meeting, we're also going to have a conversation about transferring the Wellfield parcel.
Oh, good.
Which is going to be an important, you know, piece to freeing up the site and, and actually making some of those options that we've seen even possible. My understanding, based on some conversations that Dr. Hackett and I have had with management, is that the management understands the value of the property to the project, there's no interest in, we're never going to go back and pump drinking water out of that parcel. I think management is supportive of the request, and I believe the chair of the Select Board's, you know, sort of understands kind of where it's coming from. I don't anticipate much drama around it, so the, we would be talking about that maybe February 7th. The goal would be to then maybe like some joint resolution or something between the school committee and the Select Board, and that it would actually, the final step for them would simply be that the Select Board might actually direct management to put an article on the warrant for town meeting, because town meeting ultimately has to vote. So much more to come on that, and by the 7th, we will obviously, we won't be talking about six options anymore either, we'll have a little bit better understanding about the value that that parcel might bring to the project.
And Chris, was that the final determination, that town meeting does need to vote on that transfer?
Yes, regrettably, yes. We really pushed Town Council on this. We, the Select Board does need to sort of take action and...
Yeah.
Basically vote to say, well, we'll give it to the school committee, and we need to say, we'll take it. But to actually kind of perfect it, it does need to go to town meeting. And it's, shouldn't be complicated, it's not really about design.
Right.
It's a few words, but you can imagine town meeting will, I mean, it's, let's put it that way, it's a good opportunity to kind of update town meeting on what's going on with the Lynch Project, for sure.
Yep.
Does it fit neatly into the MSBA timeline? No.
That's true. So, yeah, I mean, the rea, the reason it's got to be spring town meeting is, is because the board is going to be voting on the preferred schematic in September before fall town meeting. The board will not vote. If, if our preferred schematic should use any of that Wellfield land, the board will say, okay, great scheme, but until it's actually under the control of the school department, we're not going to, we're going to pass.
See in January.
And that, by the way, that's why we're in such hurry-up offense right now, is because when you pause with the MSBA, you effectively step out of the queue and the designers take your place. So that time that we lost last year between Thanksgiving and New Year's, going over, you know, housing data that was a little off, and getting to a better design enrollment, as fruitful as that was, we lost our place in line.
No fast passes.
And then some. So I just really appreciate everything that Dr. Hackett and Dr. Ellen Emma and others have done, and Sarah Casey, and, I mean, all the people who've been helping you to just, we are pushing so hard, so that we just don't lose any more ground.
Yep.
I would just add that it's, it's really important, per your comment, I mean, Ms. Bergstrom, about the swing space being a two-year versus a 50-year project, to have a 50-year building designed, be constrained by a process of, you know, we didn't get the land in time, would be a shame.
Yep.
For sure.
It's exciting stuff, just want to say that.
It is. Ever boring.
Never boring.
And having seen it, I guess, from, from VO, and then at McCall, and then high school, yes, just seeing where it comes out at the end of all of this, it is, it's so rewarding.
Absolutely.
Looking forward to that day. Okay, with that, we will move on to the next item of business, which I think many in our community have been waiting for, very excitedly. We will be discussing a draft of the 2022-23 school year calendar.
Okay, I'm not quite as excited as everyone else is, but let me, kidding.
And Doc, is there a newer version of this that's available to the committee? Because that link is broken now for us.
Yeah.
Okay.
It says that the file is in the owner's trash.
Oh, I have it up here.
I mean, I changed it here, so I don't know if it's changed since then.
I'm assuming it did, because that's, it's gone now.
Oh, okay.
I will share the PowerPoint.
Oh, Chris, if you go back to the folder, it's in the, the folder.
On, on Drive?
Uh-huh.
So the meeting materials, Drive.
Looking...
21, 22.
Okay, so, let me just share it now, here. So this, just to be clear, is a, is a, a first draft, it has not yet been, we have not yet had a conversation with the WEA, which is the next step, one of my next steps on this. In terms of like, a school year, next year is, in my humble opinion, and I'm going to regret saying it out loud, because I'm sure it's more complicated, but it is a pretty regret saying it out loud, because I'm sure it's more complicated, but it is a pretty regular year, in terms of where dates fall overall, what you see in front of you, you know, should look relatively familiar to what we're doing this year. It was, there aren't, you know, where the, like, for example, the December break, you know, where there's a conversation about, the holiday falls on the 25th, the Sunday. So where that break happens in terms of when we're out of school, you know, is it, is it a day before, is it the 23rd, as we have it listed on here, is an early release day? Obviously, there's, there would be no school on January the 2nd, as, in recognition of New Year's Day as a holiday. So, to the, my point is that, you know, there's always room for discussion, obviously, but it, it is a pretty, it's a pretty standard year next year. We don't have a lot of issues around, you know, where, where Labor Day falls and some of the other, like, even, even nicely, Veterans Day is on the 11th, is on, on the Friday, the 11th, in November. So it doesn't split the week up, you know, those kinds of things. So, again, this is just a draft, happy to take any questions you have or suggestions either here or offline, and we'll bring it back to you.
Mr. Brady?
I appreciate this as a draft and the work that goes into it. I will certainly just advocate, again, as I have in the past, I'm a proponent of including as many of the holidays as we can on this calendar. I think that serves the community well, I think it serves the administrative team well. We heard again this September, things were scheduled unintentionally on a holiday. I don't, I don't put the blame on anyone, but it happened, and again, I, I think that part of it is, we don't have it on this calendar, and I, I would just like to see us do what we can there. I've heard that concern from community members. I'm just, I'm sharing my, that, that's certainly my opinion on it. I know I am one of five committee members, but I do just want to emphasize that I've heard it over the years, and I've heard it again, and again, we had an example of why it was, it came up as a challenge. So, I understand it, and though it might not, you know, it's not, not my particular belief that was impacted, but I, I certainly get it, as, you know, people of faith, it's really important to them, and it, it can be quite hurtful when it's not honored and recognized. So anything we can do to prevent that from happening, especially if it's, in my opinion, zero cost to put something on a calendar, I, I think it's well worth doing. So, I just wanted to say that.
And, as one, is, just also point out, we have not vetted this yet for all the holidays, so that'll be part of the next step. This is really just trying to look at, you know, just kind of the basic start date, end date within the calendar. So there may, there'll be some shifting in, along with this.
Do they share something on that, too? So, we recognize that was an issue, and most people have moved to electronic calendars, so we created this year a calendar that had all of the staff meetings on it and the holidays, all the high holidays for the groups. So, anyone who's using the Google Calendar now, which is most people in the district, now it's showing up, like in my calendar, it's showing up on orange for all of the holidays and for like our early release and PD. So I definitely, I hear you, I was just adding, we were also trying to get to people in the electronic format, so it'd be right in front of them all the time, so.
And by people, you mean the educators
All the staff.
who would, and staff, who would actually be planning things on those days?
Yeah, that's our hope, yep.
Yeah.
But it was shared with them, sorry if that was a confusing answer.
Yeah.
It's our hope that everybody sees those, and that's why we shared it with them.
And that's a practice that will continue going forward, as I understood, yes.
And I believe, Dr. Hackett, didn't you also send out a list of all the major holidays to the staff and a notification of the holiday policy at the beginning of the year this year?
So, we played, what we did do is played up the calendar, we felt it was a better opportunity, so we
Yep.
made sure everyone knew that that shared calendar was there and all the holidays were listed, so they should click on that to keep that on there. And even still, things happen.
Right.
Regret, you know, regrettably. So, it, in, you know, it's, it's a, we do the best we can. There are some things that we can't control, obviously outside groups, things like that, but things like Picture Day, for example, you know, those kinds of things are really important, and we need to make sure that we continue to keep an eye on those.
Yep.
So, I would just offer to respond to Mr. Brady's comment. So, once upon a time, many, many years ago, we did list some holidays on the calendar, but, you know, it's almost, once you start listing holidays, like, where do you stop? And, some of the most, we had actually a really painful period, and for the school, for the School Committee at the time, where for two years, we said, we're not going to have Jew, school on the Jewish High Holidays. Not necessarily because we're making, we're passing judgment on the value of those holidays versus others, but we actually said, well, for two years, we're going to have no school because our religious observances policy is broken, and because where, the families aren't sort of, families or their students aren't feeling sort of respected in the classroom the way that we expect. So we felt we had a policy that was clear, but when we really paused and looked at it, it really wasn't. It just wasn't, we weren't helping the teachers know what to do. And so we went through a very reflective process, we asked members of the community from many, many religious faiths to come talk to us, and they did, there were tears at this table over it, and it was one of the most meaningful sort of periods for me on the committee, because we realized, we need to go back and really change the policy, and we need to simplify it, and we need to make it, I would say, Dr. Hackett, there, there's a note at the bottom, see Winchester Public Schools website for policy on religious observances? I might suggest we leave more breadcrumbs there, so, you know, maybe it's, we call out what that policy is than alphanumeric code.
Five, link to it.
Yeah, tell people where they can find it, put a hot link to it or something, because at the end of the day, we want, I think we want families to understand that whatever faith they follow, they, they can expect, their student can expect to feel supported in the classroom and in school. And so, there was just an effort, once upon a time, feeling that we, and by the way, I would also just say, when we listed many of those holidays, we also, we struggled with not just the Jewish High Holidays, but I think Adolf Hitler, in particular, there was either a Picture Day or something that tripped up some of our, our families of Muslim faiths, so that was very difficult. So, we kind of felt like putting the holidays on the calendar might make us feel better, but doesn't sort of fix the problem. What can we do to really fix the problem? So, a lot of policy work, we cleaned up the calendar, but we did make an effort, and I think it's been a little clearer in the past, where we really wanted families to know what that religious observance policy looked like, and I think, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we also made an effort, it's, it's in the handbooks
Yep, it is.
as well, so we made a real effort to do that. And it's just something we have to, I think, continue to attend to and talk about, including like, right now, you know, in, in these meetings. I think administration needs to really set clear signals over the summer, as, you know, administration and teachers are coming back and you're talking about when Picture Day is, or any other thing that's going to happen, and I just don't want students to feel left out, so.
Nope.
Neither do we.
I, I'm totally with Mr. Brady in terms of like where the comments coming from, because it, it, I get, I'm sick to my stomach when, you know, we, we trip up from time to time. And I'm not sure there's a really easy solution, but, talking about it helps. I would just also point out that our practice has long been, once we kind of get a draft out, we kind of focus on when we understand the start of school is going to be, and when the last day is going to be, and assumptions around snow days, if any, and then we kind of make that available, we kind of announce that, and then take one more step and look at where the PD days fall in the calendar, so it's kind of a two-step process, because I think families like to have that for planning purposes for vacation and so forth. So, we don't have to get it all figured out, but if you're looking for some vote from the School Committee, our practice has been to kind of do it in two steps.
Well, I mean, I, I can do it any way you want to. The two steps, from my perspective, is, well, how I'm thinking about is, this is step one, step two would be a full calendar. If we need to bring it back for additional, and provide additional time, then, you know, certainly can, we can
But you're not ready for a vote on
I'm not looking for a vote this evening, no.
Just waiting.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have it tentatively on a January 25th schedule to come back.
And then we can decide, you can decide at that point whether you want to take another run at it, another time, and, and take the approach of just making sure we define the, you know, first day of school and the last day of school, so families can plan. I mean, you know, February vacation is February vacation, April is April, right? December break, as I said, this year kind of falls, I mean, it, to me, it's kind of clear, how we would treat that.
Let me throw one last thing out there.
Please do.
We have a lot of families in this town who, you know, haven't seen extended family, they're not traveling because of COVID, just aside from fun vacations, a lot of folks just have not seen family. And, and I, I think about this from time to time when I look at these calendars, and if you look at November, we have a professional day on a Tuesday, and I wonder, boy, if that could be on Monday, the 7th, you know, would that not afford flexibility for families to do something? And I see the, I see the gestures
Let me introduce Dr. Ellen Emma to you.
Right now. Listen, I, I have, I have asked this question before, and I know Dr. Ellen Emma has an opinion, and it's not, I mean, I know, I think on any, I, I think families would always appreciate the three-day weekend, but I think they might really, and I'm not saying pick that day in particular.
There's a three-day weekend at the other end of that.
What's that?
There's a three-day weekend at the other end of that
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day.
I, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there, 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 a couple of years, years ago, we did look and made, made a few adjustments, and families got back to us and said, boy, that sure was nice, we really appreciate it, we were able to do X, Y, Z. So, I throw that out there.
And just, just to throw another thing out to Chris's point, I, I definitely hear what he's saying, and, you know, there, there's certainly another option around Thanksgiving, you know, Mr. Mahoney mentioned it, but there are districts that don't have school on that Wednesday at all, there are districts that don't have school on that Tuesday at all. So
Yeah.
there's an option there to give people a longer kind of timeline, it helps with travel. I know not every, that doesn't work for everyone, that's not a thing that everyone would appreciate, but I, I definitely know some families who would appreciate more time at Thanksgiving, rather than feeling like they're rushing if they're trying to go and see people, especially people they haven't seen in a while.
Yeah.
So, that's just another thought. As, as an educator myself, I'd certainly rather have a few more days around Thanksgiving, but I know that's, again, that's not everybody, but I just put that out there as another variable to think about.
And what I do like about that suggestion is, that's, that doesn't even become like a religious observance, you know, conversation, because Thanksgiving, to me, is not about sort of a religious observance, it's just sort of more family tradition, and I, I'm one of those families for whom family is like a four, four-and-a-half hour flight away, so it, it is difficult for some families to, to visit when they're, they're that far away, on such a limited timeframe, but that kind of generally has been our practice, it's just that half-day. But, just things maybe we can think about.
And I appreciate that, but I wouldn't trade a professional day for that. I think if, as
Say that again?
I wouldn't trade a professional day for that, I think that that would be an incredibly tough day for the district to run professional development for teachers, would be the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. I think then we're offering something to our families that we're not offering the same courtesy to our educators for
Yeah.
because they would have to be present for that day, so I'd suggest if that's something this committee is interested in, we would, I would suggest we, we don't get out of school, we get out of school on a Thursday, we could get out of school on a Friday instead.
Yes, definitely.
Yep.
Because I'm not, I, I want to make sure that our professional days are well-valued in the district, too.
I agree.
You want me to make my pitch? Are we good?
Do I have a choice?
[laughing]
Like you're asking me for permission, uh huh.
Well, I would just ask that this is the one day that matters most when we're scheduling PD, because it's the election day, and we've worked hard to get surrounding districts all to get the same day off. So we share resources, we pool PD, it's an opportunity for a lot of our areas, nurses, phys ed, fax, that can work with their counterparts in other districts that they don't often get the chance to, and then we also collaborate, we're paying for big-name speakers that are a lot of money, and we share costs. In addition to which, it's election day, so it's a lot easier for our principals not to have school going in their buildings on that day, so, but to me, the most important thing is, that's the only day a year that we collaborate with other districts like that.
I remember that.
So
Election Day's Saturday now.
No, well
Could be.
So can I make a suggestion?
But, I'm not, but for, but for mid-year, for midterm elections, maybe
Oh, not for, right.
I don't think we control that, I do, I do think, election, I'm assuming Election Day is on that Tuesday, because you, you look convincing.
It is.
But, but we're, but I was actually thinking about the high school, so, the new policy that was adopted by the Select Board and Town Meeting, forgive me if I'm wrong, I think we, we are all voting at the high school, even on that Tuesday.
I think only if it's a Saturday.
What's that?
I think only if they move it to a Saturday.
That's, yeah, that, I think that applies only to the spring meet, spring election.
Only to Saturday ele, okay, so I thought maybe we, I thought
I knew that's what you were thinking.
I thought, I thought this was also, though, about getting folks out of the elementary schools and McCall, so that it was just going to have a bigger impact on the high school, which I hadn't really sort of thought through. If that was the case, it would almost be like, I mean, you could run school, elementary and McCall, but you couldn't do it at the high school if the entire town is trying to go through the high school. Feeling a little silly, I don't have that clear picture of that policy that was just approved. Anyway, I stepped on you, you were trying to say something.
No, I really wasn't. What we can do is bring back options. So, we can take a look at, you know, what is it, because, kind of the good news is, the last day of school is the 15th of June, you know, you don't want to do this, but you have two weeks to play with, right?
Right.
You don't, you, so
Yeah.
you know, we can, I, to, to the point, instead of sacrificing a professional development day, on, because teachers will also take a personal day if we have a professional development day, right?
Right.
I mean, understandably, so, no, they can't do, yeah, well, they can, they do.
It's okay.
I don't take it all back, I take some of it back.
They're among friends, go ahead.
You just had a whole deck going there.
I did, no, I did, didn't do it.
Saw the wheels.
But, we could take, we could take a look, so if there's interest in trying to do something around the, the November break, the Thanksgiving break, we'll take a look and see what we could do with that. Are there, are there, other interests?
What were you talking about with the June 15th?
June 15th, if there is, if we have no snow days, that is the last day of school.
Yep.
So it would be the 16th.
We would add, we'd be obviously adding days, right? The, the
Well, extending.
Extending.
Yeah.
Right, right. So we'll just play with it, we have some room to run, if we want to. And I'll tell you, this year, the breaks have been pretty well timed. You know, the December break was, was a good time for people to, to just kind of clear out, it's obviously been a, a tough year, so, and respectful to the fact that, you know, Mr. Nixon's point around families have not been able to travel or haven't traveled, you know, it's something that we should look at. So we can bring out a couple of options, is there anything, other than that November week, is there anything else you'd like us to take a look at? It would be kind of unconventional. Okay, all right, you'll see it again.
Okay, thank you very much, and next on the schedule is, we will move on to action items, which, it's 9:05. So, we will begin with a report from the Policy Subcommittee on consideration of approval of the gift of Manchester Field basketball courts in memory of Bob Bigelow. And we do have two guests who will be coming to speak on this this evening.
Yeah, Mr. Miller and Mr. Grassi are in the attendees, I'll promote them to panelists.
That's great. And I will just summarize, these are going to be improvements, and Mr. Miller and Mr. Grassi can also, will also be speaking on this. But, Mr. Bigelow was a lifelong citizen of Winchester, who was an NBA basketball player and a public speaker, but most beloved for his involvement with youth sports and with, and as a youth coach, and he passed away last year. So, Mr. Miller and Mr. Grassi have come to us with a gift proposal for updating the basketball courts on Manchester Field, which were last done by Mr. Bigelow, with, Mr., under Mr. Bigelow's leadership around 20 years ago.
Thanks very much, this is Gary Grassi, and I'm here with Doug.
Welcome. The floor is yours, Mr. Grassi.
Thank you, Dr. J. We appreciate your time. My name's Gary Grassi, I'm a Winchester resident, I'm also a public school teacher in Sudbury, teaching civics to eighth graders, and I'm the president of the Winchester Basketball Association. Doug Miller, as many of you know, is a native of Winchester, he's a 2006 grad of Winchester High School, where he captained the basketball team and went on to become a player and captain of the basketball team at Harvard. And each of us, in our own way, have longstanding relationships with Bob that have, Bob Bigelow that have brought us here. And, Ms. Bolling, as we appreciate your introduction of, you know, sort of some of the history of that. In discussing our plan to renovate the basketball courts in, in memory of Bob, and, you know, his contributions, some of which you cited, were enormous to the town, and they were very much unique and enduring. He's a man who influenced literally thousands of kids in Winchester, just in Winchester, not to mention kids throughout New England and many around the world. To honor Bob, the project includes, it's really in five pieces, there's a concrete There's a concrete pad and shade structure, which will be adjacent to the courts down at Manchester Field behind McCall. We're going to replace the backboards with glass backboards and new support mechanisms while retaining the existing poles that are installed in the structure. We're going to reseal and repaint the courts and we are going to put up a commemorative plaque in, in memory of Bob. And our plan is to donate these improvements as an in-kind gift to the town. Separate and apart from the improvements at Manchester, we are also going to endow a scholarship in Bob's name for needy Winchester High School grads. You know, you mentioned that, you know, it's 20 years ago that the Winchester Basketball Association, really led by Bob, raised the money to, to build these courts. And I think that's particularly, you know, it's particularly fitting that we honor Bob here in this, in this manner. When we set out to pull this project together, our goal was to raise $130,000. We started the fundraising in earnest in late December and within three weeks, we've received approximately $117,000 in cash and another $15,000 in pledges. So we're here to report that, you know, shortly into the campaign, the response of, you know, many, many Winchester residents has been outstanding and we anticipate exceeding the, the goal. A few weeks ago, we met with the school policy committee to discuss the project. And at the time, you referred us to, or the, the policy committee referred us to the Disabilities Access Commission. Doug and I are pleased to report that we've met with the Disabilities Access Commission and incorporated their requirements into our plans. And at the end of last week, on, on Thursday, received the DAC's approval for the project. So with the approval that we already have in hand of the town's select board to undertake the project under the supervision of the town engineering department and the DPW, the approval of the Conservation Commission and also of the Disabilities Access Committee, we respectfully request the school committee to approve the project so that we can, we can proceed. And we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yes, Mr. Nixon.
So would the, does the chair want to sort of distinguish? I think there were two issues, right? One was how can the Bob Bigelow Memorial Fund literally honor Bob's memory with a plaque or something with, with these improvements? And we had some policies around naming and so forth. So I, I think that has been basically sort of worked out, right?
Yep.
And, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that because we, we've, you know, certainly accepted gifts from others in the past and specifically kind of called out when those gifts are made in someone's memory. And, and, and so I really do appreciate and I'm supportive of sort of the motivation behind this. So assuming that that's sort of been worked out and understood with the Policy Subcommittee, the naming issue, then it's really just about, you know, this acceptance of a gift. And I just want to clarify that that's the case. I'm glad that you guys were able to meet with the DAC. It sounds like you had a really productive meeting with them. And I also understand that through the Engineering and Planning Department and DPW, the town's also interested in helping to kind of identify accessible parking along the road. That would be on the town, not on the memorial fund, of course. So I'm, I'm pleased to know that they're willing to step up and find a way to make that happen as well. So I just want to be sure I understood you're all square in terms of the Policy Subcommittee, right?
Yes. So from the Policy Subcommittee perspective, we had looked at it according to school committee's policy manual FFR on the naming of grounds, spaces. And we believe that it is okay for the plaque to read in, with funds raised in memory of Bob Bigelow, of, of Coach Bob Bigelow. But specifically actually naming the commu-, the court after Mr. Bigelow would have to wait for five years until school committee could come back and revisit that because we do have a policy in place in which we have to wait five years. So what we had discussed with Mr. Grassi and with Mr. Miller was that the earliest that the, that their, that their team could come back to school committee for that request would be 2025.
Got it. And, and just a question for Gary and Doug. Is, is it your intention, obviously the ground's frozen right now. So you guys are working hard to get through, get over all these hurdles in Winchester so that you, you get going in the spring? Do you have, I mean, it sounds like you've been really successful with fundraising. Are you, are you looking to have the work done by a certain point?
That, so the spring is when we would like to begin, Mr. Nixon, and obviously in coordination with DPW and the engineering folks, what we've been able to do thus far is begin to order the equipment and, you know, for all the reasons that probably don't need to be said that we see on the news, making sure that you have product available is one thing, I think. And Doug can clarify this. March, maybe the earliest, that we would undertake to effectively paint and reseal the courts, just for weather reasons. Do I have that about right, Doug?
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, we'd hopefully start the concrete work in March if weather allows and then do the, the resealing maybe a month or two later, April, May, after the site works done.
Great.
And the hope would be, I guess, just to wrap it up, that we would have some sort of event. We've, we've not determined the date. Obviously, we'd want to be attentive to other events in town, but something along the lines of a ribbon cutting and possibly, we've talked about having some kind of basketball tournament to introduce folks to the, the new facility in more, in a more, or the renovated facility, I should say, in a more formal way.
Got it. So, and I, and I understand Meg White was able to attend that DAC meeting. And I, I just, for, for others' benefit, we've, we have many, we have a long, long list of ADA citations in town. Many of them, of course, on the school side. And we've accepted gifts in the past that were really well intentioned and then once constructed, found that we had some ADA violations, which then sort of burdened other capital funds. So I think this is a fantastic gesture that you're making in Bob's memory and I, I really support it. And I'm glad the DAC was able to engage, you know, Meg can certainly speak well for the town in terms of having to pick up the pieces when these things aren't really coordinated. So I'm, I'm pleased and understand that the town is going to work with you guys to sort of identify things like accessible routes, you know, flush curbs, parking and so forth. That's not really your burden, but it's, it would be really terrific when this is complete to know that that's all kind of been coordinated through the town and there's nobody better to do it than, you know, Beth Rudolph and Jay Gill.
Yeah. And Chris, thank you, kudos to you for bringing that to our attention so that we can make sure that our gift in kind met those requirements. And, you know, we appreciate you bringing that up so that it could be thought of and planned ahead of time. So thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to yield to others if they want to talk, but I'm happy to make a motion when the chair sees fit.
I just, just one request. I know you're coordinating with DPW, but if DPW could cycle back around with Dr. Hackett in the spring because that is adjacent-
Sorry, I can't, I can't, I'm sorry, we can't.
I'll repeat the question in a second.
Okay. Is adjacent to our spring sports fields as well? And just to make sure that the, any construction or any work that's happening isn't going to interfere with any of the spring sport practices.
So the question is just to make sure that the, the construction work and DPW can coordinate with, with my office doesn't interfere with the spring sports schedule.
Okay. So, and, and that would mean on the, in, in areas not next, not the courts you're talking about, fields?
Anything adjacent, right, right. Yep.
Yep. So, yes, and the work is, the planned work is just isolated in this, this very specific area, but yes.
Okay. I'm, okay. Yep.
So I would accept a motion for the approval of the gift of the Manchester Basketball Court improvements.
Want me to make a motion?
Yes.
I move to accept-
And subject to the school committee's naming policy.
I, I moved, say that again, Karen?
And subject to the school committee policy FFR.
Okay.
On-
I'm winging this a little bit, Doug and Gary. So I move to accept with gratitude a donation from the Bob Bigelow Memorial Fund in Bob's memory for improvements to the existing basketball courts at Manchester Field, as well as new construction of a shade structure, with the understanding that this new amenity will be fully accessible, meeting the requirements of the ADA and MAAB rules. It's further understood that the town, through the Engineering and Planning Department and DPW, will coordinate and provide an accessible parking space or spaces as required or recommended by the Disability Access Commission and that the memorial or plaque be in coordination with school policy FFR.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The vote is unanimous. And we thank you so much for all your hard work on this.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. And next on our agenda is consideration of approval of quorum signing, signing for the warrants from the Finance Subcommittee.
So we, we discussed this at our last meeting. So this is just an opportunity to take a vote that, while in best practice, we'd like everybody to be able to take a look at the warrants and sign them on a regular basis that, to move them forward or we would just need a quorum of the committee.
Was that in the form of a motion?
It can be.
Yes. Second.
Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The vote is unanimous.
Can I make a request associated with this, though? Since we are now and have been meeting in person for some time, can we get warrants back?
At this table?
At this table.
Yeah, we can have Peter or somebody bring them back here.
It'd be good to get back to that longstanding practice.
Would you like to have them available before the meeting, Mr. Nixon, so you could come in early and review them?
They typically were.
Yeah.
And that's sort of how it worked. So if one or two members got here early, they could start filling-
But we have some new, new members with us, so I was just reviewing.
Yeah. And similarly, for someone who is just sort of seeing it for the first time at a meeting, they have the opportunity to follow up with Peter, you know, the next day if there's a question.
I will also note that Mr. Rowe is making them available in a basket in his office and welcomes anybody to come in and sit down when, at your own convenience as well.
And it's very helpful to talk with Mr. Rowe about what, about the ins and outs of the warrants. So if you have questions or want to inquire with the business office at the front, then being able to talk to them is also very helpful.
Okay, duly noted.
Okay. Next on our agenda is consideration of approval of the WIFI grant for grading for equity and standards-based grading. And I believe Ms. Connolly might be joining us.
We did, Ms. Connolly here. I will promote her to panelist.
Magic of Zoom.
People appear.
Okay, it looks like I'm promoted as a panelist.
You have been promoted. How did it feel?
I was going to say, wow, that's like the best thing that's happened to me all day.
Teleporting.
Actually, I would say briefly, the best thing that's happened is I'm delighted to hear that we're moving forward as a community to honor Bob Bigelow. That's amazing, the work they've done raising that money. Bob was a truly stellar human being who gave so much back to this town and I'm delighted to see that move forward. So kudos to Gary and to Doug Miller and everybody that's worked on that. That's really, that's great. So what I'm here to present to the committee is a series of WFE grants, the total $34,485. I'll leave to the end the grading for equity and standards-based grading. Some of these grants go back to things that we tried to do before the pandemic really shut us all down. The first being the mindset mathematics. Julie McElhany-Gorman, your math coach, had written us a grant that originally was for $11,000, which would have brought a number of educators out to California, to Stanford, to work with Joe Bowler. Obviously, that all got put on hold. Julie was willing to go back in March, this coming March, for an in-person seminar and asked us for approval to bring two additional teachers. So we're hopeful that those two educators are going to be willing, willing to come along. The other education grant that I think is very exciting and I, I am hopeful that we can make it happen this time is the virtual reality devices that the teachers at McCall had written a grant for. The idea being to expand the world beyond McCall and to perhaps bring some actual creativity and innovation to our use of technology. It's not a technology-based grant. It's a grant that utilizes technology, but one that is written across curriculum, so across social studies, technology and also world languages. This grant went up in price considerably from the first time that we approved it because Google Expeditions shut down. So we're excited that we're able to go forward. We're also really excited to partner with Jason on a grant that was written to the Winchester Hospital. Winchester Hospital does offer community grants every year and they're especially interested in addressing problems related to isolation, to alcohol abuse, to potential self-harm. So Jason has come up with a great program of bringing speakers to work with our student mentors, a program that I think you've heard a lot about from Dennis Mahoney and also Anna Paradise. So WIFI has pledged $5,000 in the hope that the Winchester Hospital will ma-, will match with another five, giving Jason $10,000. Regardless of the hospital's ultimate decision, WIFI will stand by its commitment for 5,000. And then finally, the biggest amount of money represented in these grants is the $18,500 for grading for equity, standards-based grading. I think you folks have talked about this around the table a number of times. I don't know if Dr. Ellen Emma wants to chime in with any thoughts, but this is money that we're providing to help with professional learning communities and also further professional development.
You may not be able to hear her chime in, but, because, but-
Sure, I'm happy to. This, we did this at Curriculum Subcommittee as well. So our secondary, at our elementary level, we have standards-based reporting. At our secondary level, they're bringing together both that concept, raising that up more at the middle and high school and combining it with our work around social justice and equity and bringing the pieces together. And it's not, it's really about equity for all students, different styles of learning, race, culture, all of those pieces, trying to think about how we grade being more clear, transparent and equal for all students, which involves looking at our own biases and our own implicit ways that we do business in schools. So the, they've had great success over the past six months. We've been doing some PD workshops specifically on this topic. Lots of interest. The teachers really wanted to dig in more, so brought the proposal to Karen, who worked with us through the proposal process and onto the board. And three of the teachers came and met with the WIFI board and are really kind of spearheading different PLC groups that have been working with this. So this will be funding for teachers to continue to explore, to get PD and to set up great books and classroom practices for the bulk of the time over the summer. There'll be some spring work where they'll be able to be compensated to do this shift in some of their practices. So can't say it again, WIFI being so supportive, that's a huge amount of money, but it will really allow our secondary teachers to dig into this concept. So thank you very much and we appreciate it.
Can I just say one thing too, Jen?
Yeah.
At Curriculum Subcommittee, I just have to say real quickly that the three educators that came, I, in the middle of everything that's going on in the world, I haven't seen three educators more excited about bringing what they were learning to more teachers because of the impact they were seeing on what kids were learning in the classroom. I almost think that calling it grading is, is, it, it feels like an A, B, C, D, and it was so much more about getting a better idea of what students were learning and being able to move students forward from, from where they are and to demonstrate growth for those kids and have kids be able to see their growth better than a traditional grading system. So I just wanted to add that in that it was-
It's much bigger than just grading. So, yeah. And what's interesting is the three that are kind of spearheading this are an English teacher, a math teacher and a world language teacher. So that's pretty awesome.
Yeah, I would, I would definitely agree with you there, Michelle. And, and I'm sorry, it's, it's a little difficult to hear in this webinar format entirely what you, what you said, but we did view it as more than just grading. And I think that again, it was hearing from the three educators who spoke to the WIFI board, who also spoke to your Policy Subcommittee, their enthusiasm, their energy, their vision. It was really hard not to say yes. So I think that with educators like that leading it under the auspices of Dr. Ellen Emma, this will, will be good. I, I think it's also exciting to know that the principals at both schools, McCall and WHS, are supportive. So I think we're, we're happy to see this move forward.
Two questions. So on this particular subject, not that you need to identify them by name, but I'm curious to know more about these three educators. Like from what departments are they from? Are they two at McCall, one at the high school, vice versa? Because I recognize this is a six through 12 initiative. So can you just say a little bit more? I mean, I'm assuming they're not department directors, more-
We can just say who it is. It's fine. I'm sure they can come here and update you. So Karen Leploski.
Okay.
So she is the one director, so it's kind of a six, 12.
Okay.
Then we have Matt Bond, who's a high school math teacher.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we have Genevieve, and I'm sorry, she recently changed her name, Cabreras. Is that her new last name? So she's a world language teacher at the high school, but also the coaches at the middle school have been helping with it too. And the middle school teachers have been very involved. It just so happened, these were the three that kind of started the PD on it.
Okay. Thank you. I was just kind of wondering if the nexus lived in one- I was just kind of wondering if the Nexus lived in one building more than the other. And then last question for Karen is, do you know when you're going to hear from Winchester Hospital? And is, is Jason sort of in a wait and hold mode until he finds out if the other half of that money comes through?
Winchester Hospital is turning their grants around very quickly. They were due last Friday and I believe they have stated that they will make their determination in mid-February. I think Jason is looking at rolling this out both through the end of this year, but also the beginning of next year. So I think he's in, in pretty good shape as far as getting things moving. There's certainly plenty going on at the high school, even without bringing in these outside presenters. And I think that, that both his hope, what I expressed to the Winchester Hospital folks in my letter of support and what our board has said is, as this rolls out, should there be need for additional funding in the next school year, that's certainly something that we would be happy to consider. So I think that, you know, he very wisely decided to make it a somewhat limited presentation to get it started.
Yeah.
And then as he picks up speed, if he needs additional funding, Winchester Hospital does do their community grants on an annual basis and of course, WIFI would do it more quickly than that. So it should turn around pretty quickly. I mean, I think it's awesome that they make their decision within a month of getting the grant request.
Got it. Thank you, Karen.
Mr. Brady.
Yikes, just to say, it's very exciting that we're going to have some of our educators working with Dr. Joe Bowler. For those that may not know, that's, that's just an extremely exciting person to be working with as far as mathematics go, particularly in elementary school. So I'll just say that, it's a very great opportunity and appreciative to WIFI for making that happen.
Now, we were excited to see, I mean, it's all on your math, math coach, Julie McElhany-Gorman, who brought this to our attention and who also has received other funding for the math manipulative library, which supports the premises that Dr. Bowler brings forward. So hopefully we'll, we'll be able to eventually send all the educators that, that we hoped would go from the different elementary schools, but it's again, like everything else, a little tied up with COVID realities of trying to get folks out there when we've seen a surge going on. And, and the Bowler conference is going to be in person, not virtual.
Awesome. I'm happy to make a motion.
All in favor?
Do you know, you read my mind. I move to accept with gratitude professional development grants totaling $22,000 and education grants totaling $12,485 from the Winchester Foundation for Educational Excellence as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And thank you so much, Karen, and to WIFI for the many times that you have come back to us this school year with many grants from WIFI. We appreciate all of your support.
No, thank you and, and thank you to the many parents that, that support us. And if you haven't bought your WIFI D in a bag, this would be an awesome time to join the hive by going to wfe.org and purchasing your bag. This year ironically, or interestingly enough, sports themed, be a good sport.
That's great.
Good choice.
Yeah. Limited quantities, buy them quickly.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have consideration of approval to accept a $125 donation from Looters Environmental Incorporated.
Move to accept the unrestricted gift with gratitude.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The vote is unanimous. And then we have consideration of approval of minutes, many sets of minutes, from November 1st, the 18th, December 7th, 16th and a special meeting and a regular meeting from the 16th.
I'd like to suggest that if, unless anybody has a, any set you'd like to pull out, that I could make a motion to accept those all as a bunch.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then we have the chair report and I would just ask the community to continue to please be as safe as you can and mindful of each other as we continue to meet all of the challenges of COVID and testing and changes and adjustments and having to be, make changes on the fly. So please be patient as we work through all of these challenges together. Now for our superintendent's report.
And, and a huge shout out to all our school nurses who have been.
Oh my gosh, yes. Working, yes, our nurses have just been.
Unbelievably so.
Yes.
Words cannot really express it.
I didn't even know where to go from there, other than thank you, so.
Agreed, agreed.
You'll be pleased this evening to know that I really don't have anything to add that was already discussed this evening. I feel it was a very full and productive agenda and I appreciate all your work tonight.
Thank you. We have future agenda items as listed. Any other suggestions from the committee?
I think I heard you say Jen Markham's coming to the next meeting or to a future meeting soon.
Likely the next one, yeah.
Yeah.
Great. She may not know that yet, but.
Now she does.
Now she does.
Yes. Adding to that January 25th list.
Having a hard time staying in front of my communications.
Okay. Next meetings, we have January 25th, 6:00 PM, January 31st, 6:00 PM and February 8th, 6:00 PM. January 25th, as we've said previously, is going to be our public hearing, followed by a regular meeting. And then January 31st is going to be a vote on the school committee budget.
Just to clarify, our working assumption is that meeting on January 31st would be a remote meeting, right? We had talked about that because that's double booked with the EFPBC and that's a single agenda item meeting where we're basically voting the FY23 budget. Is that still the idea?
I, I recall that we had said it was going to be remote, then I thought I heard that there may be some possibility that it might have to.
Not that we need to figure it out right this second.
That is still the idea.
That's the idea.
To answer your question as asked.
So the EFPBC, of course, meets remotely. We typically meet at 6 o'clock. That, that is going to be a big meeting on the 31st. We, EFPBC will be meeting, it's another heavy lift meeting. So I think we had talked last time that this was, we would have a meeting on the 31st, really just for one purpose, which was to vote the budget. So we didn't think it would take a great amount of time. So we can, we can work on the EFPBC side, maybe we postpone by 30 minutes or something, we start at 6:30, something to that effect. We, maybe something we just have to keep looking at, thinking about.
Yeah.
Maybe we start at 7, I don't know.
We'll figure it out.
We should talk to Jay about that too.
Yeah.
But I just want to be sure this is still, it's, I think it's remote and there's just one agenda item on the 31st.
That has been the intent.
That has been the understanding.
Yep. Just say that, looking at the calendar, really realizing that we are approaching the end of January so fast.
And, and the, the public hearing itself on the FY23 budget, that, I don't have my calendar right in front of me, the budget calendar, is that for the 25th?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so let me see, with that, I would accept a motion for school committee to move into executive session for the following purposes, which are purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, since to do so in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Winchester Education Association, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. And purpose two, discuss strategy with respect to non-union administrative contracts, since to do so in open session would be detrimental to negotiations.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And we need a roll call vote.
Aye.
Reconvene in open session only for adjournment.
Yes, that is correct. We will reconvene in open session only for the purposes of adjournment. So, thank you very much this evening.